Good morning. It is nine thirty and I would like to call the January twenty fifth, twenty twenty four regular meeting of Athabasca County Council to order. July, July twenty five. Well, that's why I was struggling to read it. It says. Brain in my. I thought I said July. The first item of business. Is uh. Is the agenda approval. The items that must be discussed this morning are all of item three. That's three point one, three point two. Item number five point one. Item number seven point one. Items number eight point one, eight point two. Nine point two. And all of item thirteen, that's thirteen, one, thirteen, two, thirteen, three, thirteen, four, and thirteen, five. Councillor Anderson.
I'd like to please add item six point two as well.
Other items? So sorry, councillor Anderson had six point two, councillor Wallack, then councillor Hull.
Uh, nine point one.
Councillor Wallack is nine point one. Councillor Holland.
Uh, seven point two, please. Uh, seven point four. And councillor Cromwell with like seven point seven, please.
Okay, so that's seven, two, seven, four, seven, seven, and nine. No, that's it. Okay. Councillors.
Excuse me. Uh, I think uh. Seven, three. And what the heck, seven, six. And. You know what? That that probably be good enough.
Hey. Are there any further items? Or and I'll go through this again. The items that I've recorded are item number two, all of item three, that's three point one, three point two, item five point one, six point two. Seven point one, seven point two, seven point three, seven point four, seven point six, seven point seven, eight point one, eight point two. Nine point one, nine point two, and all of item thirteen, that's thirteen, one through five inclusive. C O, did you have any other items? Are there any uh, is there a motion to councillor Minns has moved the agenda as amended with the approval of the items not selected for debate? Approval of the recommended motions of the items not selected for debate. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion, all those in favor? All those opposed, the count is eight and zero and the motion is adopted. Councillor Anderson.
I'd like to move to recess the county council meeting and proceed with the public hearings, please.
Councillor Anderson has moved to recess the county council meeting and proceed with public hearings scheduled for this morning. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and zero and county council is in recess. I would like to declare the public hearing open. I'm Brian Hall, reefer Athabasca County, and I'll be the chair of the hearing. On behalf of council, I'd like to welcome everyone here today. All of council is present and uh. I'll take a moment for introductions. Uh, beginning on my left, we have councillor Minns, councillor Holland, councillor Chamsik, councillor Wallack, councillor Anderson, councillor. Capitanic, councillor Gerlick, and soon to join us in the empty chairs councillor Cromwell. The secretary of the hearing is Mr. Bob Beck, who is the C O for Athabasca County. Any persons who have joined the meeting via Zoom and are wishing to be heard should give their full name. Anyone on Zoom? There's no one on Zoom. Uh, is there anyone in the room that would like to be speaking to this? Do you intend to speak? Can you state your name just so that we can record it?
I'm Bruce Goodyear. I'm applying for a permit for propane filling station.
Okay, Bruce Goodyear. Thank you, Bruce. Welcome. And beside you, are you speaking? Hi, Laurie. Thanks for joining us. Uh, the. The public hearing for bylaw zero, one, two, two, zero, two, four is now open. Mr. Beck.
Thank you, Miss Chairman. The purpose of this public hearing is for Athabasca Council of the County to hear testimony from interested parties. Is not meant to be a debate between presenters and all comments must be directed to council through the chair. Only one person may speak at a time and each person wishing to provide input to council will have the opportunity to do so. The ground rules of the hearing and the order of speaking will be Director of Community Protective Services Krista Wilkinson will speak first to outline the background. And to provide an explanation of the bylaw. Members of the public who are wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak. Director Wilkinson will be given the opportunity to present closing remarks or address any of the issues presented. Councillors will be given the opportunity to ask questions. Council will then end the public hearing and will later consider the information received at the public hearing. Council will only consider matters raised at the hearing. Only councillors may ask questions of speakers during the hearing. If any persons want to ask questions of a speaker, they must ask the chair to ask the question on their behalf during their presentation. And the chair will only ask the question if the chair wishes to have an answer in order to undertake its consideration.
Before hearing from the public, I'd like to ask Director Wilkinson to provide background and explanation on the proposed bylaw.
Good morning, um. Application to amend the land use bylaw was received proposing a zoning change from agriculture district to light industrial. For a portion of lot one, block one, plan one, four, two, two, six, six, one. This fifteen acre parcel is approximately four kilometers south of Wandering River. First reading of this bylaw was approved on June eleventh. Um, the applicants would like to develop a propane filling station on the portion of the property to be redistricted. The general purpose of light industrials to permit opportunities for light industrial and manufacturing uses appropriate in specific locations. As determined by the county, which will support and serve the regional. Gas, oil and gas, agriculture and forestry industry base.
Does council have any questions or points of clarification they'd like to ask the director? Seeing none, um, Director Wilkinson, are there any written materials that have been submitted?
Yes, there are. So we.
Read them and put them in the record.
We referred this out. Um, as normal practice, uh, we did get a referral comment back from Alberta Transportation and Economic Corridors, um. Alberta Transportation and Economic Corridors offers the following comments and observations with respect to the proposed land use amendment. Number one pursuant to section six, eighteen point three, one of the municipal government act. The department expects that the municipality will comply with any applicable items related to provincial highways in an A L S A plan if applicable. Number two pursuant to six, eighteen point four, one of the municipal government act. The department expects that the municipality will mitigate the impacts of traffic generated by developments approved on the local road connections. To the highway system in accordance with policy seven of the provincial land use policies. The next one is uh, from Tellus. At this time, Tellus has no concerns with the proposed activities. Uh, referred it out to internally to infrastructure. Infrastructure has no concerns with the rezoning. Apex Utilities has no objections to the proposed uh, amendment in the file mentioned above. And then the last one is from Forestry and Parks Land Operation Divisions have no concerns with this bylaw amendment. That concludes.
I would now call upon persons wishing to speak. Mr. Goodyear, did you wish to speak to this? Uh, if you do, please uh, jump up to the chair and put your microphone on. But. Yep. Thank you.
Yeah, I got the, I got a couple of letters there too from uh, different campgrounds in the area, said that uh, it'd be an asset to. The campgrounds and surrounding areas, so you don't have to travel so far for propane and that kind of thing, right? So I got a couple of letters there, some of them, look over them or. Read them. That, that's all I got to say, to say is.
Thank you. Uh, for, for making the trip and speaking to us. Director Wilkinson, do you, would you typically read those into the record or we just put them in?
If you wish, yeah.
Okay, let's uh.
To whom it may concern, we are writing you this letter in hopes that Bruce and Laurie Goodyear are able to open a propane filling station in wandering over Alberta. As campground owners, we see great value in having this type of service available. This would not only be a benefit to the campgrounds in the area, but also a great benefit. A great asset to the community and surrounding area. Thank you, Tyler and Trista Barker. I'm writing in regards to the application submitted by Bruce and Laurie Goodyear to have an approved pro- propane refill station. On their land to southeast of wandering river landfill. As a much needed service in the area, I strongly support the approval of this request and see no reason why a request would be denied. They have the facilities and professionalism to keep complete this setup while keeping safety at the highest standard. The dust control program limits excess of dust in that area, so a minor increase in traffic should not be an issue in this respect. This would be a great addition in the area for Creekside Campground and locals alike. Evan Dix, co-owner of Creekside Campground.
Thank you. Does council have any questions or points of clarification? Councillor Minns, Flores.
Just wondering if this is a commercial entity and in that, is there going to be commercial trucks coming out of there like propane trucks? Or is this going to be just uh, accessed by? By uh. Patrons.
That's a, that's a question that the speaker can jump to the. Yeah, you can. I just, we use the mics, uh, Mr. Goodyear, just so that the, anybody listening to the recorded version can.
Okay. Yeah, it'd be a truck come there, like takes a thousand liters, it'd be a truck come there probably a couple of times a summer. Or to fill the thing, just come up my driveway, like I had a truck come there. Cause I burn propane in my garage, so the truck comes there anyway.
So. So, but you're, uh, you're not going to have your own trucks leaving there and going and filling propane.
No, no, just a truck from uh, uh, Western Propane in Grasslands will come there. Probably a couple of times summer, it takes a thousand liter tank, so it takes a lot of propane, right? So, you know, that's all it'd be, because what he comes for to fill my truck, my garage and that kind of thing anyway, a couple of times in winter, that too, right?
Okay, okay, got you. The other question I had was uh, the safety aspect of it, is there, does there have to be a safety plan? Put in place?
That's a question for the director.
Yeah, so that, that would be part of the development permit application. When that comes forward, if that, if this gets rezoned, then we accept an application for the proposed development and that would be a condition of.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. I also, we also did propane courses. For found propane and that kind of thing. We did that through uh, Grasslands, uh, Western Propane. Yeah, and I also applied for a permit for yesterday to uh. Uh, the gas permit, I already got that in place, paid for that yesterday.
Councillor Holland, please remember the question should direct through the chair.
Through the chair.
I don't know how that works exactly.
To Director Wilkinson, um, part of the uh, development permit is dust control covered there?
Um, I'm, I'm going to say that that's a question we're not answering. This is a hearing about land use uh, classification, not about development permits. And there, there's no development permit in front of us. Councillor Cromwell, Flores.
Thank you. Through the chair to the director or to our delegation. Thank you for being here, Bruce. I like, I love the idea. I think it's very much needed where we are. My one question, and I'm not sure who I'm directing that to yet. Uh, looking at the area to be rezoned, forty eight meters by ninety meters, director, why such a large area for? A propane tank. Reason I'm asking, and I'm sure my friend here at the table knows, when we do a rezoning, there are. A multitude of then pre-approved locations or. Or points of business can be done on that property. And let's say you do sell your, your property here, that leaves it open to move in even a bulk fuel storage onto that location in that residential area. So my question is, do we need? Uh, to have a full ninety by forty eight meters for the purpose of what you're doing, or can that be scaled back? To a smaller zone.
Director Wilkinson, do you want to start? Or Mr. Goodyear?
Yep.
Uh, I didn't, I didn't put in for the size of it, the, the size of the, the lot there. When I applied for the permit, I think we did it here. And it was drawn out from here. That uh, for the lot, I didn't, I didn't put in, like, I only needed three meters by, by six meters. That's how big the tank is, but well, plus a parking lot, right? Parking area to park. That's all, that's all I applied for.
Director Wilkinson?
Yeah, so I was going to speak to the parking piece, so the, the development itself. All will need to be within that small area for, for this particular proposal. And so it allows for parking, it allows for uh, containment, all of those things.
So follow up.
Tenth of an acre. Councillor Cromwell?
Yes, we're looking at. Is there any way, again, I'm going to ask, can we scale that, that size back? Do we, do we need a full ninety by forty eight meters for that area?
Um, I, okay, that's um. Director Wilkinson, do you have? Thoughts? On minimum parking requirements for? Et cetera.
I would have to look at that. Uh, my understanding is, is that uh. My understanding is, is that uh, you know, when, when the development officer sat with the Goodyears and they looked at. How big of an area they needed for the development, this is what they came up with.
Okay.
Um, and so as far as parking goes, I'd have to look in the land use bylaw and figure out. How much parking, but I know that they worked, worked together and found that this was an appropriate area.
And so this, yeah, this has been developed with the recommendation of your department and the applicant, and it's presented here for.
Yeah, Tara sat with the applicant and went over their plan and this is the area that they came up to get with together.
Okay. Are there any other questions or points of clarification from council? Is there anyone else who has not spoken and wishes to speak? I don't think there's anyone online. Seeing none, does council have any final questions or points of clarification? At this time, um, is there, again, this, you, you'll see, Mr. Goodyear, we get to ask this question lots of times to make sure everybody gets heard. But is there, uh, this council of any questions of any speaker of any of the staff? And does anybody feel they've not been fairly heard? Seeing none. Uh, there being no further testimony, I will close the public hearing and further advise that council cannot receive any further information on this matter. Thank you for attending the public hearing. I declare the hearing closed at nine fifty one AM. I would now like to uh, declare open a public hearing for bylaw zero, one, eight, two, zero, two, four. We've already uh, done introductions. And uh. Uh, Mr. Schenkelberg, are there anyone joining us via Zoom? No one's joining. Is there anybody in the gallery that would like to speak to this? Seeing none. Uh. Secretary Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of this public hearing is for Athabasca Council of the County to hear testimony from interested parties. It is not meant to be a debate between presenters and all comments must be directed to council through the chair. Only one person may speak at a time and each person wishing to provide input to council will have the opportunity to do so. The, the ground rules of the hearing and the order of speaking will be Director of Public, uh, Director of Community Protective Services Krista Wilkinson will. Speak first to outline the background and provide an explanation of the bylaw. Members of the public who are wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak. Director Wilkinson will be given the opportunity to present closing remarks or address any of the issues presented. Councillors will be given the opportunity to ask questions. Council will then end the public hearing and will later consider the information received at the public hearing. Council will only consider matters raised at the hearing. Only councillors may ask questions of speakers during the hearing. If any persons want to ask questions of a speaker, they must ask the chair to ask the question on their behalf during their presentation. And the chair will only ask the question if the chair wishes to have an answer in order to undertake its consideration.
Before hearing from the public, I would like to ask Director Wilkinson to provide background and explanation of the proposed bylaw.
An application to amend the land use bylaw was received proposing a zoning change from agriculture district to campground commercial for a portion of the northwest ten. Seventy two, seventeen, west four. The applicant is looking to do some further development on an existing campground. This bylaw amendment covers the area currently utilized for the existing campground. This property is approximately five and a half kilometers northwest of Wandering River and is accessed off of Range Road one seventy three. First reading of this bylaw was approved on June twenty seventh. This campground was developed prior to the C five district being implemented. For development accessory to the campground to be considered, the land use bylaw will need to be amended. Um. The general purpose of campground commercial C five district is to provide for specific areas. For commercial recreational vehicle parks and, and or campgrounds to be developed within the county.
Does council have any questions or points of clarification they wish to ask, ask the director, uh, Councillor Cromwell?
Thank you, uh, through the chair to the director. Do you mention, well, we understand that to be compliant now, they have to switch to a C five district from an agricultural district. But you mentioned they want to make some additions now to that campground as well? About what I understood from you, what are they looking at adding?
Uh, are those more appropriate questions for development permit? The, the hearing is about changing land use classifications. Director? I, I guess I'm looking for your advice on that too.
Um. Well, obviously, this applicant came forward to the department as they are looking to add a shed, I think. Um, and so to accept a development permit application, something accessory to the camp, the existing campground, we do have to go through the rezoning.
Thank you.
Are there any uh, other? Questions or points of clarification for the director at this time? Are the, uh, director, are there any written materials that have been submitted?
Yes, I do have a submission from the applicant. Um, good day, everyone. My husband and I were informed that we need to redistrict our current campground from agriculture. To commercials so we can comply with Athabasca County regulations and bylaws. We want to be compliant with the county so that we can apply for permits to build a deck or a small shed in front of our RV. It's only a portion of that we want to redistrict as we also have agricultural land that is used for farm use. And will continue to be used for agricultural use. We have uh, had no complaints from our neighbors or residents. I also inform my campers of all the bylaws that they need to follow. Thank you and have a great day, Christine and Chris Langdon. And then I also have some referral comments back, um. Thank you for including Tellus in your circulation. At this time, Tellus has no concerns with the proposed activities. This one is from the Director of Infrastructure in-house, no concerns. Apex Utilities has no objection to the proposed land use bylaw amendments described in the file mentioned above. And Forestry and Parks Lands Operation Division have no concerns with this bylaw amendment.
Well, I'll call upon persons wishing to speak. Is there anyone present? Who wishes to speak? None. Does council have any questions or points of clarification? Is there anyone else who's not spoken and wishes to speak? Does council have any other questions or points of clarification after hearing that? Um, at this time, does council have any questions of any speaker or of any of the staff? Seeing none, um, does anyone, does every, does anyone feel that they have not been fairly heard? There being no further testimony, I would close the public hearing. And further advise that council cannot receive any further information on this matter. Thank you for attending the public hearing. I declare the public hearing closed at nine fifty seven AM. Let you reopen the council meeting. Our delegation scheduled for eleven is uh, not here yet. The next item of business on the agenda is on page forty five, item six point two. Councillor Anderson, you asked for that on the agenda.
I think you'd like to move the recommended motion.
Councillor Anderson has made a motion to move, well, would like to move the recommended motion, which is that. Council approves the following capital projects to commence in the twenty twenty four year. Ape ceiling on the road north of Highway fifty five adjacent to the airport and on township road six, eight, two to the airport. And west of Range Road one ninety five adjacent to Greenlee Fuels for half a mile. Also, engineering for the replacement of bridge file one, three, eight, three, three in Collington. And further, the council direct administration to compile a list of capital hard surfacing projects for the five year capital plan to be brought back to the twenty twenty five. Budget deliberation ranked based on policy three two four three. Discussion. Counselor Anderson, do you want to open the discussion? Other discussion, Councilman's floor is yours.
Just regarding the, the, um, the budget, uh, process and everything. Um. Got an email regarding, uh. CCBF on funding through the federal government and that. What would be our funding, our capital pro, would that funding go towards some of these capital projects?
That's a detail I would refer to our CEO.
The chair to the CEO.
Does the CCBF funding apply to this?
Yes, Miss Chair, um, we're gonna have to recess right away, it's at ten o'clock, um. Anyways, for our, for our next item, um, while that item is going on, I'll bring back our budget document and explain how. Uh, council had a portioned out of the grants for the capital projects this year, it's right in the budget document.
I think I just heard Councilman's move to table this item until after our item seven point one.
Yeah, we heard.
Correct, you table your motions have no discussion on the question tabling this till after the delegation, all those in favor? And opposed, the count is nine and zero, thank you, Councilman's. Uh, I'd like to declare a two and a half minute recess and we'll start the next item right at ten, but this gives everyone a chance to recharge their. Drinks. All right, it's ten, five after ten, I'd like to reconvene the July twenty fifth. About January, July twenty fifth, County Council meeting. Um, we are at item number seven point one. This is a request for review of a compliance order. Uh, this is something that our. As a group, we've not, uh. Done directly under this section, so CAO Beck is gonna outline a couple of the guidelines and rules so that the council and everybody can be familiar.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Uh, this process is somewhat similar to the public hearing process before, but not exactly. After addressing any preliminary matters, council will hear from the appellate and then from county administration. Following each presentation, counselors may ask questions through the chair. After the presentations, county administration and the appelia, uh, appellate will be invited to provide closing remarks with the appellate going last. Counsel may choose to deliberate in private before deciding to confirm very substitute. Substitute or cancel the orders by way of motion.
So the, um, and for clarity, the purpose of the hearing is to hear testimony from interested parties. It's not meant to be a debate between presenters and comments would be directed to council through the chair. Um, for those present, would you please introduce yourselves and state your name so we know he's here?
My name is Donna Swerhun.
Welcome.
And, uh, we are requesting if, uh.
Oh, please, please say, just as a reminder, please use your microphones when you speak to counsel. Hey, Ms. Swerhun, the floor is yours still.
We're requesting, um, if council allow our son Jonathan Rose to present our.
That's, that's fine, you absolutely can, um. The appellate or the representative is welcome to to provide the presentation.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So just really quickly, if if at your pleasure, I'd just love to introduce myself a little bit, um. David and Donna, my parents, um, I think probably some of you might be aware of. The, you know, they've had an interesting situation with their neighbor the last couple of years. The reason why that I'm here, one, um, I have an interesting background. I spent the last twelve years. In high profile client advisory, very, um, like a very stressed out executives going through some of the most important. Stressful, conflicted transactions of their lives. It's our clients mostly in New York. Um, and so I think my skill set lines me hopefully to provide a little bit of a different lens and maybe we can push this a little bit forward. That's my hope. Um, the second reason why I'm here and, you know, I've largely been on involved, but. I think especially specifically one of the requests, I've actually seen the benefit and it's push, push this, let's call it situation disagreement. Forward a bit, and so, so that's the reason why I'd like to try and help. That's what I'm trying to do here is collaborate with you guys and try and be helpful. So what I have in front of me is my parents' words, it's gonna be about ten minutes. Um, and what I've tried to do is to take some of the sting and maybe the emotion of, you know, a party that's been involved in 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 conflict for a little bit. And hopefully we can have just a reasonable discussions and again with the goal. Hopefully we can push this forward and find a mutual mutually beneficial solution or at least take steps towards that. So here we go. In the following presentation, I ask that this council accurately consider the following two themes in support of. My parents' variance requests for our fence, and when I say our and the like, that's, these are my parents' words. Um, and our small accessory building. The first core theme, please consider that our requested height variance for eight foot fence. Is the most sensible measure available to mitigate the challenging situation that currently exists between lot, lot ten Swerhuns. And lot nine, the Lloyds, of which this committee, you know, largely already knows. And, um, on the other side, lot eleven to the east has already indicated their approval in favorability of the eight foot fence. The second core theme is our request for side variance approval for our accessory building to be within the fifty nine inch offset. Um, consistent with numerous examples of similar previously approved variants at lot nine and also a number of other Amos Lake lots, so this isn't new. And we can't, which we can illustrate with a number of examples. Secondly, our accessory building is also consistent with a number of similar accessory buildings that Amos Lake lots that currently exist. Within the designated by law offset, but are not actively receiving re, uh, enforcement. And so regarding either of these treatments, the outcome is that landowners are permitted to have their buildings and our request is that we receive treatment. That this is consistent and equitable with the peers of Amos Lake and other residents at Athabasca County. And if I could, I can add my my own personal touch here. I think. From my perspective, a little bit of an outside party, I think number one with the fence, reducing some of the opportunities for that situation. I think, please, please really take that one seriously. I think that one's important. Okay, I'll dive back in. So the official request for variance, number one, we're requesting a two foot or thirty three percent variance. On the property line fencing between lot nine and lot eleven to extend that fence to eight feet for privacy. And then number two, we're requesting a seventy percent side variance for the placement of a small steel accessory building on lot ten. This building was seventeen inches from the property line, separating lot nine and lot ten. Um, it's already below the the top line of the fence, so it's not visible to neighbors. Okay, so the core reasons for our request, we are asking that these variances. To protect our right to privately enjoy and use our property and to protect the value of our property as guaranteed by the MGA. But also for the mutual privacy and enjoyment that we be benefited by our neighbors. We ask the council to consider the following six points, which we have illustrated sensibility and the exceptional circumstances which we believe justify these requests. So number one, currently, the eight foot fence prevents visual auditory and physical interactions with the adjacent property owners. And specifically, this has already proven to dramatically reduce the interaction, tension and conflict that, you know. We're aware of that exists between the Swerhun's lot ten and the Lloyds lot nine. And as a note, you know, we've already previously constructed a six foot fence. It did not nearly have the same positive impact. We tried it. It's one of the reasons why I'm trying to help with this situation. Meanwhile, the eight foot fence is our attempt amicably and fairly reduce the current challenging situation for the mutual benefit of all parties. And it's not just the landowners, it benefits the landowners. But reduction in this conflict benefits the Amos Lake community. Um, and it also benefits the county because there's gonna be a reduction of callouts to county services to adjudicate this, you know, neighborhood disagreement. And I think we've already begun to see that, at least when when I come to stay on my remote working weeks, I've I've noticed this. The eight foot fence, number two, the eight foot hence fence hides excessive and arguably unsightly. Outdoor and industrial storage, which is present both at lot eleven and lot nine. As such, the extra height of the fence creates a significantly more private, calmer, amicable and visibly appealing environment at our home. While allowing our neighbors to use their property for their alternative preferences. Allowing everyone to each enjoy privately enjoy their time at the lake as they see fit and they see best. Number three, on January thirtieth, twenty twenty four, the Athabasca County recently granted a fence height variance thirty eight percent and fifty percent. That's higher than the variance requested here.
Just at the point of clarification, Jonathan, this is a hearing to review compliance orders.
Okay.
It's not a hearing to ask for variance requests. We're not, we're not taking in a variance request. We're talking about a compliance order.
Yeah, and so we're.
Just, just so that, like, we just gotta make sure that we're, what we're asking for is. We're reviewing a compliance order. Not granting variances.
Not, sorry, say that, I just.
It's not within the decisions a council can make at this hearing to grant a variance.
Nope.
Okay, like, just so that you're clear about what we're doing here.
Okay.
There've been two compliance orders issued.
Yep.
Section five forty seven of the Act. Um, allows you to appeal those compliance orders, but this is not the time to, like, to make a variance request is a different process and I would.
Okay.
So, uh, please continue, but I just wanna make sure that we're, understand what we're.
I understand.
Okay.
Okay, um. Okay, so let me, let me try and 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 change this a bit, so. Let me segue a bit and let's say, the theme, again, let's revisit, the two themes here specifically are to. Discuss the mutual benefit to landowners, the county and the client and, um. The community. Or the eight foot fence. And so that is the reason for its construction and that is what. You know, we, my specifically myself, of a somewhat removed party is hoping that the county can take into question. Because it is actually doing good. And so, um. Let me see if there are a few other things. Um, point five is a good one. The eight foot fence does not. Impact the amenity of the neighborhood, wards are live edge, so it's not an eyesore, um, and I think that is something to consider. I think what what I'd like to do next is just. In the spirit of, um. I I wanna talk about the conflict just a little bit to remind everyone kind of some of the things that are going on and and again with the spirit of why. Um, the eight foot fence, I think, is extremely beneficial and important, um. I think the situation at Amos Lake between lot nine, lot ten and some things is, you know, can aptly be described as being untenable. Um, the response, the results of the actions. You know, the refusal for to find compromise, we have embatt, you know, embattled parties. And I think, again. The best path forward that we've seen is is the ability to actually segment those parties and reduce the number. Of interactions that they're forced to have. If everyone can have more privacy, um. There are fewer interactions, there's fewer of these moments of inappropriate behavior or maybe good people. Not being their best because they're they're having a tough time for going through something and they significantly disagree. Um, and and not just disagree in behavior, but disagree maybe on how they utilize their lake lot. Storage or or buildings or a number of other items, um. Issues of privacy. And so. Um, you know, and and I think the fence like really solves. Lot of those problems, it's really, it's really quite remarkable. It it reduces the inappropriate behavior. It reduces, it allows all parties involved to utilize their lake space as they see fit. Um, it reduces concerns for privacy. There isn't concerns of cameras pointing into each other's yards or or, um. All all kinds of things, um. And and then even beyond the, the, um. Conflict. I think, um, largely in Athabasca County, Northern Alberta, we've seen theft vandalism, tampering on the rise. And I and I know that I can say that like this, this, the construction of this has given my parents. More confidence, they've seen a reduction in in things happening to their property, um. And and so what I think, um. What I'm gonna jump to is. Do you have a number of examples in front of me of where there are variances and I and I understand this isn't, um. Proving a variance, but. What I wanna demonstrate is examples where. Folks have received variances or have have received approval for something that's different, um. And so like I have examples in front of me from. Lot twenty. lot twenty, um, they've got two variances, eighty percent, twenty-nine percent. I see lot four. Uh, they have a seventy-seven percent variance on a minimum setback distance from the shoreline. See lot eight, thirty-three percent variance. And then I've got a number of examples in front of me of maybe similar items that exist at different lake lots that don't have, um, development permits, but do exist and have not received enforcement instruction. And so I bring these up because I think maybe it provides point that there is room for, for some of these, these items to exist, something like an eight-foot fence. And I think when you bring in the larger human piece, which, which is really what I'm trying to dive on, the, the human piece of reducing this conflict. Hopefully giving cut two parties to take a chance, take a breath. Who knows, maybe one day find, find a compromise. I think my personal goal is to, to help provide an opportunity for that to begin to happen. So I'll, I'll leave it there. Thank you. Appreciate your time, everyone.
Does counsel or anyone have, uh, questions or points of clarification they'd like to ask right now? Seeing none, um, I, I'm going to take one little pause and, uh, because I didn't have a script really well documented, take a second, uh, to just introduce the council and the, the folks in the room. And I apologize for not catching that right at the beginning. Um, on, uh, your right is our C O, Mr. Bob Beck, the recording secretary of the meeting, Mrs. Blair. We have communications coordinator, Mr. Schenkelberg, counselor Minz, counselor Holland, counselor Chamsik, counselor Wallack, counselor Anderson, uh, counselor Kaptenik, counselors Gerlick, and then counselor Cromwell, and then of course director Wilkinson. So, sorry, um, I will now, uh, open the floor to director Wilkinson to provide a response. Oh, do you have a, is there anyone that wants a question right now? So, questions or points of clarification from?
Um, and, and forgive me if it's in here and I've missed it, but I'm just reading and I see that the, in two thousand and twenty-one, the fence was brought into compliance. When was it changed to not fit in compliance?
It was changed recently, just recently it was changed.
Like six weeks, a month?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or points of clarification? Counselor Minz, floor is yours. Through the chair.
Um, the building that's on the outside of, of the fence. Am I able to ask what that's for?
Through the chair. The question is, what's the use of the building against the fence?
Yeah, what? Sorry, it's a storage building. And that, and, and, and also through the chair, is that building built on your lot or is that?
No, it's a, it's a mobile building. Uh, it's a steel building. And, uh, it is easily, easily trans- transportable. It's just the reason why we want it there is that it provides, uh, we have a pathway along the west side of our house that we can take our Kubota down and go down the entire side of our house. And if it was out more, it would restrict that. And that's the reason why we're asking for that.
Good, thank you. Counselor Holland?
Thank you very much. Um, you mentioned that the fence that was in compliance in twenty twenty-one was changed recently, um, three months ago to an eight-foot fence. Was the development permit not, uh, requested at that time?
Please put the microphone on.
No, we didn't request a development permit. We built it.
You just meant to hear.
And, and the thing is that there's many, many people in our country residential area that that requests adds as well after they have completed their development.
But, uh, that, that, for the questions? Other questions at the table or points of clarification? Counselor Gerlick, you look like you've.
So the storage building, it's eighteen inches from the property line or?
Yeah, it's seventeen inches from the property line.
And so to access it, do you access it from?
From the front.
From the front?
From the front. The door is facing, uh, lot ten. And the back is against lot nine. And with the fence, there's no view of that building whatsoever by lot nine.
So it, the eighteen inches gives you enough room to access it without being on neighboring property?
Pardon me? We don't, we're not on the neighbor's property.
The door's on the other side.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not against the fence.
It's not against fence.
That's good, thanks. And, uh, secondly, the replacement of the fence, the other fence that was there was relatively new, but it was replaced with the higher one.
So the other, the other fence, um, was a six-foot fence. And that was eventually taken down and then eventually replaced with.
Because the six-foot fence wasn't providing the type of security or cameras.
Point of order, please.
Sorry, um, the, the, the six-foot fence didn't provide the same level of privacy. And, and honestly, separation that's been beneficial for both parties that we've seen over the last few months. It's, you know, person can stand and just see and everybody sees what's going on. And obviously, two parties that maybe have a more challenging time to see eye to eye. The additional height has really absolutely been a game changer.
Yeah, I had something else. The, the windows on their main cabin, the cabin itself is four inches from our property. And the cabins on, uh, the windows on that main cabin uh, looks into our yard. And the six-foot fence did not cover the entire window. And often, um, surveillance cameras were put into the, the windows that looked into our house and in our yard. And the other concern is that there are surveillance cameras that are put in the yard that records our, our conversations and also our activities. And, um, it makes it very uncomfortable to use.
Counselor Gerlick? I'm good. You're good? Counselor Cromwell?
Thank you. And, and I understand what you're saying and please don't think that I don't. So what happens if a neighbor then puts a surveillance camera up on a pole or up to the roof height? Are we going to get this again where we find that uh, you've gone ahead and demolished an eight-foot fence and put up a twelve-foot fence? Um, do you understand what I'm getting at? We, we had a fence that was put into compliance. You took the down, put up another one without a permit because of this issue. Uh, very much I can see this going back and forth until we're looking at a thirty-foot concrete wall. Which, uh, sorry, do you understand what I'm saying?
Question, may, may, may I, may I take a shot at that one? So, um, the, the cameras that you're talking about up high, they're policies that they're pointing down. And so these cameras, um, my parents are speaking about are kind of placed at this height and they look straight. And so, um, that's kind of, kind of the difference. Obviously, straight cameras looking at everybody else is, is doesn't, doesn't match policy or privacy. Um, cameras that you're speaking about way up high, policies is, is they they speak, they, they point down. Um, and I think if that were to happen, then the appropriate response probably expected by this, this, um, council would be to, to get bylaw or other individuals involved to assist in a rational and reasonable solution.
For yours, thank you. Okay, I understand that. And then going back to my friend Counselor Gerlick's question. So this building, as we see on page number fifty-seven, the backside is the backside of the dumpster fence and the door opens away into your property?
Into our property, yes.
Okay.
Into our property, yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Holland, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, I don't know if this can be answered either, but I'm going to, to, to try. With regards to the cameras and the, um, breach of privacy that you're feeling, um, has a civil case been created or complaint been made with the R C and P to handle those particular, uh, concerns considering that's not much that we, uh, council can really do.
Stay in our, stay on the subject, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, there is a bylaw, a surveillance camera bylaw that, and we've had this addressed before, but there's been, uh, it hasn't been enforced at all. And, um, and the, the bylaw officer has been involved with these things before, but they continue to exist. You know, the cameras are placed and I have a binder full of pictures showing where the cameras are and and how invasive they are.
Thank you, I understand, thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, that we should let the county respond and then we can, we'll circle back to additional questions as they arise. Director Wilkinson, would you like to respond on behalf of the county?
This part of my report won't be a response. It's just, uh, my presentation, I guess. Um, so on June nineteenth, uh, these two orders were, um, issued to the owners of lot ten. Um, the first order is in reference to, um, to the building, uh, and also then the second one is in reference to, um, the fence. The I'm going to speak to the first order first. Um, so in the land use bylaw, um, they're, they have to have a minimum set yard by side, side yard setback of, uh, one point five meters. And, um, um, the following development shall, the development shall not, um, so I've referenced in my report, um, you know, the sections of the land use bylaw that, that apply to this. Um, this parcel is point one eight acres in size, so it's quite a small parcel. Um, the accessory building is clearly not in compliance with the land use bylaw. Um, and so that's why the, the compliance order in that case was written. Um, the second, um, the second order, uh, is in reference to the fence. So again, I've referenced in my report there, the section of the land use bylaw that, uh, it references. And then the discussion on this piece, um, you know, so we've been, I, I did put a timeline in my report there, so I'm just going to go over that a little bit. Um, so in January twenty twenty-one, um, we found that the fence was exceeding the height. Um, we engaged with the landowners on, um, a couple of times and then they applied for a variance. That variance was refused by municipal planning commission. Um, the, and then they appealed that refusal and then S D A B upheld, um, the, uh, decision. So the recommendation in both cases to council is that they confirm the order with a new date for, uh, for compliance.
Does council have any questions or points of clarification they'd like to ask the director? I'll start maybe just to confirm, director, can you just, was there a development permit requested on the building? And refused or was there not requested?
The building, we haven't seen an application for the building itself.
Other questions from council? Or points of clarification? None? Counselor Gerlick? Questions? No? Um, after presentations, um, there's an opportunity to provide closing remarks. So I'm just going to ask one more time from council, uh, for any questions or clarifications you'd like from either of the parties. Seeing none, does anyone feel, Counselor Gerlick, or, or Counselor Cromwell, floor is yours?
Thank you. And I, I know it's been asked and, and perhaps I wasn't paying attention properly. Um, that building, it is used for storage. It is not an outhouse. Okay. All right. Just wanted to double clarify that. Thank you.
Counselor, uh, Holland?
Thank you. Um, and I appreciate your, um, patience with me as I just went to find that information with regards to the surveillance equipment, uh, which is in the land use bylaw, uh, nine point one four. Um, has that been addressed? Uh, are we, it has not been addressed?
Yeah.
And you have put in complaints to bylaw?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that.
So we've heard, uh, today that the building is, I think I heard seventeen or eighteen inches from the property line. So have you moved it since this picture was taken? It's in our agenda? So is the fence seventeen or eighteen inches from the property line?
The fence is built within, on our property in its entirety.
Good. That's just what I wanted to understand. Thank you. Um, are there any other further comments, questions or points of clarification? Seeing none, um, the closing remarks can be provided, uh, first by the, uh, county and secondly by the appellant or your representative. Director Wilkinson, do you have any closing remarks on behalf of the county?
I don't have much to add.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Swerhun, the floor is yours or Mrs. Swerhun?
Um, the thing is that we didn't apply for a development permit for this building because it's less than one hundred square feet. And you don't have to reply, uh, apply for a building permit for a building that is less than one hundred square feet. The other thing is that, um, this building is movable and it is constructed of steel. Um, and with the fence, the fence provides a great deal of privacy. And it provides security. And I'm aware that it is, um, it is, uh, violating the six point two bylaw. With the accessory building, I wasn't aware that you had to have your accessory buildings four point nine feet away from the property line. The buildings in our neighborhood are often right up along the property line, their accessory buildings are. And so we were just doing what other people do, was place their, their accessory building alongside the fence line so that their yard area is larger. Uh, the fence, the fence is important. It reduces the tension and the interaction between people. And I think it's very important that the council, uh, appreciate how we are trying to make this all work. We are trying very, very hard. We have invested a great deal of money trying to make it all work.
I can just jump in one last moment, um, specifically speaking about the fence one more time. Um, kind of being a little bit of a, of a outside party, um, having a relationship with everyone on both sides. Um, I, I've seen the, the benefit of this. And so if this fence is in, in compliance, um, if there is no, no way that the council can see the, the human benefit and, and honestly, the probably the first olive branch in a number of years to, to try and take steps forward to mitigating, reducing this cli- this, this, um, disagreement. And, and, and creating an environment that's noticeably better for everybody involved, both sides. I, I know that when I come up, um, Jenny and I wave to, to each other, we smile. There's no, I, I don't witness any conflicts between two emboldened parties. I, my parents are happier. Um, and so, so my request is the, the council, because I, I don't know all, all the rules admittedly. Um, if there, there is nothing that you can do to help support this step forward in this situation, can you please help us or help me be this conduit to, to push this forward in, in, in a better way? Because like, not even for the benefit of my parents or not even the benefit of, of Jennifer, who, who I actually get along with, um, ma- make it for the benefit for, for those that are around, um, their children. Also Jennifer's nieces and, and nephews who, who I'm friendly with still, um, it, it makes a big difference for everybody. So, so if you can't help us in this situation, help me help this situation and another situation. That's, that's my request for you guys. And, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next, um, moments, I guess, um, I think why don't we take a two-minute break? I just want to double check a couple procedural things if that's, uh, Why don't we take a two-minute break, I just wanna double check a couple procedural things, if that's uh reasonable for everybody, so let's come back at, well, let's make it seven minutes. Seven, I know seven's the number, uh, we'll come back at quarter to on that clock.
Sure.
Before we start, Maya, would you like to tell us what you're thinking in university?
Hi Pierce.
Look likes.
Ms. Farnin. I'd start off with my apologies on the delay in starting the presentation. We're in a gauging debate. And we're glad that you're here to join us. It's always a pleasure to see you. And to hear about the good work of STARS. Just in the interest of time, I know that you are very familiar with all of our council and administrative team. And so we, we, we're going to dispense with the introductions and just give you the floor. Thank you again.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to see each one of you. I really do. And it seems like it's been extra special this year, you know, because I've had the opportunity to bring you some further information about helipads as well in May. And now here I am again to bring you your annual update. So really awesome. Thank you. So we'll just get started. Like next year. STARS is going to be celebrating forty years of serving Albertans. More than sixty thousand missions have been flown to date. So, and all because, you know, as we have maintained being a charitable entity in order to ensure that whoever needs STARS has that opportunity. As we go forward then, our main goal and mandate is to provide critical care anywhere. So I'm sure that all of you have heard, you know, in the last few weeks that we had a great announcement with Alberta Health Services at our Calgary base with Minister. That we have signed a ten-year affiliation agreement with Alberta Health Services for the block funding of fifteen million dollars per year. So that's really going to provide us a great sustainability piece as we move forward. It still leaves us just under twenty-eight million dollars that must be fundraised each year. Of that, netting roughly ten million dollars net each year, the STARS lottery. We're a very respected lottery that's been ongoing for almost thirty years. And being able to generate that kind of support, especially from Albertans, really is key that, you know, they, they know and understand what STARS does, what STARS is able to provide for them. So this year it was ten point seven million dollars net that we were able to raise. So that comes off of that, leaving us with about eighteen million dollars must be fundraised each year. Of that municipalities are a key aspect with our municipal program that you're a part of. And so that's generating, we're just at about two point two million dollars per year that's generated from that, as well as many long-term corporate supporters and long-term events, some that have been over thirty years that are actually represented on the helicopter as well. So it is a team effort across our province that we continue to have this wonderful support. So here's where we're at with our lovely sea of green map across Alberta as well into northeastern B C. Everywhere that you see green is a, represents a rural supporter of STARS. So all municipal districts and counties. So you can see there's just a handful left that are in white, shown in white as non-current non-supporters, but I do have requests in front of each of these councils. So we are hopeful to really unite the entire province. So we're at about ninety-four percent now in united partnership. The yellow boxes represent the regional leaders. So we're at about seventy-five percent across the entire province that are regional leaders, meaning that they are at a minimum two dollar per capita rate. And that they are on a fixed rate. So they have basically upped to the nearest dollar as a fixed rate so that we won't see fluctuation when they have census changes. As well now that they are also building regional partnerships. So they're helping us to, for me especially, to reach out to towns and villages that lie within their boundaries and ask them to join their counties in support of STARS annually. So the red, there are sixteen in total, the red little stars now, those represent all of the counties and municipal districts, including in northeastern B C. That have unanimous support from every town and village that lies within their boundaries. So it is, you know, continues to be a united effort, but together we are ensuring that we all have access to robust health and safety network. So within Athabasca County, up to June thirtieth of this year, so a half of a year, statistic wise, these are, represent missions actually flown within your county area. So your average on the overall average of missions that are flown within your boundaries, twenty-three missions per year. So almost twice a month, we are here in one capacity or another. Fifty percent, seven percent, it leans a little bit more heavier on the inter-facility transfers because a lot of scene calls will be generated where ground ambulance will respond, take that patient to the nearest hospital, whether it is Boyle or it's Athabasca, and because it is of a critical nature, STARS is still called. So overall, there's been seven missions so far this year. Up to June thirtieth of this year. Any questions on that? Okay.
Counselor. Actually, not on this one, but on the slide prior. If we may go back one, I was just, I'm just catching up with all the boxes and whatnot. And I noticed, of course, Athabasca is listed there, but Athabasca County is not, which is separate from the town, I would imagine. And
This is representing Athabasca County.
Oh, it is Athabasca County. Okay, so.
Yeah, because this is representing all of the rural sector. So counties and M Ds, there are towns and villages within some of those with the yellow boxes that are either, they are partnering with their county. Or the yellow boxes also represent that all of those are at a minimum two dollar per capita or higher.
Okay. And I believe we are a two dollar per capita. That's why I was curious.
Sure, we did move to that at the last project. So that, and that was, I think, something that the county didn't communicate outward to STARS.
Oh, I see. Yes. When we get to the last slide, I did not receive that information, which is why I still had it the way it is.
So we will get a lovely gold boxy.
Yes, absolutely. And then we'll work towards the star as well, when I can start to work with some of the towns and villages.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is an update now to that postal code project that I told you about that had been ten years in the making. As an update for last year, for a full year, there has been five residents flown within Athabasca County boundaries. Four had postal code from Athabaskan area, which would also include any of your rural residents that may possess that postal code and one from Boyle area. Overall, since two thousand and ten, we are at two hundred and twenty-six residents now that have been flown by STARS that lie within Athabasca County boundaries. Now, on the right-hand side represents the listings across the bottom, represent all the different locations where these two hundred and twenty-six residents were flown. So let's have a zoomed-in view here. Of the two hundred and twenty-six area residents, you see Athabasca County outline in blue of your county boundaries. Now look at all of the red dots all over everywhere else, even in the bottom at Manitoba. One hundred and eighty-three of these two hundred and twenty-six residents were picked up within, somewhere within Athabasca County. Forty-three of these residents were picked up in twenty-two other locations across two provinces, Alberta and Manitoba. Four different STARS bases have served your residents that lie within your boundary areas. Accidents and illness do not happen just because you're close to home. And this is testament and proof of that, when you look at all of the areas where people were not at home when they needed STARS. STARS is much more than rapid transport now. Our Emergency Link Center is integrated with all dispatch centers and resources, utilizing G I S mapping coordinates in order to help locate a patient as well. Now that we are the dedicated critical care provider in Alberta, so we are also mandated by Alberta Health Services that we dispatch HALO and HERO responses for both northern and southern, southern Alberta. More than thirty-six thousand emergency requests, just over a hundred per day are received through the Emergency Link Center. Now with our transport physicians, they are available twenty-four seven. And they provide all critical care, medical and procedural guidance on every critical patient. So regardless of the mode of transport, whether they go by ground ambulance, rotary wing, or fixed wing, it is our transport physicians providing all of that medical oversight. As well, we are now able to save precious time on both ends of the mission. While we are en route to, to get a patient, let's say from Athabasca Hospital, for example, STARS transport physicians are in contact with your medical professionals to provide medical and procedural guidance as well if we determine, or even for a scene call, if we determine that this patient is a trauma patient, for example, that may need to have neurosurgery. Well, they're on the phone in the background while we're en route with the patient. They're scheduling the neurosurgeon, they're scheduling the cardiac cath lab, the mandatory CAT scanner for a stroke patient. All these things are happening simultaneously in the background. So once we arrive with the patient, that patient can now bypass emergency, go directly into trauma surgery, or whatever the case may be that's necessary for that patient. So again, you know, we are involved in so many other aspects of critical care behind the scenes as well as physically with the patient. Also now, we are still working on this pilot project of virtual care and being able to utilize small iPad with an encrypted, secure link where now that we'll be able to, we're still working with Alberta Health Services and hoping to roll this out to more of the rural hospitals in the, is opportunity of virtual care. So if the helicopter might be out on another mission, does not mean that they do not have access to critical care. The rural residents, the rural physicians and nurses by, through virtual care, we can still guide them because we can see the patient, they can show our transport physicians in the Emergency Link Center, they can provide that critical care as well. So this is just another way of utilizing the latest in technology and advancement as we move forward through the years. STARS is known to be an innovative leader around the world. We were the very first civilian organization in Canada for night vision goggles more than twenty years ago. More than fifty percent of our call volume is always at night. So this is essential in being able to save lives. Universal blood onboard. We were the very first helicopter EMS program in North America to bring this life-saving measure. That's been more than ten years ago now. Always carried two units of universal blood. Now we've had the opportunity to increase that to four units. We work very closely with the Canadian Blood Institute to ensure, you know, there has been a bit of blood shortage as well. So taking that into account, but when we do get patient information that we know we're going for a severe trauma patient, maybe a amputation, something like that, that we can bring extra blood. Also, a brand new Canadian first. This was trialed in Saskatchewan last year. And it only has just been approved last October in Alberta. So brand new news of the new massive hemorrhage protocol. So it's two different blood products that we can provide for any patient that is going to require more than two units of blood. So then we can add these to reverse anticoagulation and promote blood clotting before we can give the other two units of blood when those patients need four units of blood. So this is another Canadian first. So we continue to try and stay on top of the game and advance the best in critical care. The International Air Medical Transport Conference, I spoke to you about this before, is the fact that, you know, this is worldwide competition, very rigorous competition where they bring together teams of two from different helicopter EMS programs around the world to compete in this rigorous competition. We've always held our own internal competition to identify a team of two from each one of our six bases that will all come together at one location. Each base has an opportunity to host one each every six years. And so this year it was Grand Prairie. We had our opportunity to host the final competition to identify who is going to represent STARS on the international stage. We recreated an actual case from a few years ago on the Wapiti River. It was a riverboat accident. They hit a bridge. There was five different patients on the boat. Then the boat had floated downstream to the opposite side of the river, landed on a big log jam where there was no sandbar to land the helicopter. So we actually had to hover exit our crew onto the boat to assess the patients, found a sandbar to land the helicopter. Every single resource that was, that was involved in the actual incident also was involved in our training session that we had just last month on the Wapiti River. So there was R C M P, ground ambulance, STARS, M D of Greenview Fire and Rescue, Technical Search and Rescue, Conservation Officers, and Fish and Wildlife. We're all involved in this, in helping us to offload, assess, offload patients that we could get them utilizing the Technical Search and Rescue Riverboat to get them to the ground ambulance that was waiting and then assess the two critical patients that we ended up flying as well. So it was an amazing day on the river. It's unbelievable. It just totally brought me to tears when you're watching this competition going on and all the different things that are happening. And we had to do this six times for six different teams. So it was the Regina Base this year that they won the opportunity and will be going in October to represent STARS on the international stage. This competition, we have participated twenty-one years straight now. We have taken first place internationally, seven years. And we have placed top three in the world all twenty-one years. We are bringing your residents the highest level of critical care available in Alberta. So in closing, I want to say thank you very much for continuing to stand by our side and being partnered with STARS. I want to thank you for your current support and the fact that, I apologize that I did not receive the information and was not aware that you had increased your support to the, I believe, fourteen thousand dollars per year for two years for your council term. So as we move forward, I'll probably be asking you next year then to see whether or not we can land on a fixed rate of support that we would really appreciate if you would follow a lot of that seventy-five percent that you saw in the yellow boxes that we would be a part of your, a regular line item in your budget rather than a multi-year pledge that goes from year to year, because then there's council changes and things, and sometimes there's significant fluctuation there. And our mission rate is not going down. So that really does give us that sustainability piece, just like having that tenure agreement with Alberta Health Services now. We're trying to grow that seventy-five percent of those yellow boxes to be a line item in your budget each year. So more to come on that, but thank you again. We greatly appreciate your support. We're averaging ten missions per day across our six bases. So literally a life is saved every day. But it's partnership that has made that possible going on forty years, and you've been a key part of that. So with that, I would like to offer you a small token of our appreciation for our continued partnership that's well into two decades. And would like to present you with that with the new helicopter and hope that you will be proud to show your residents that you are doing something very special for their health and safety and for future generations here in Athabasca County.
Thank you.
And I would like to ask if we could have a photo opportunity.
Come to the front. Grab your rest of council, come on up. This is a joint event. Put it there for now. And I'm sure to show you both, there's somebody here who has a picture hanger, I know. Counsel, we usually take a minute and ask questions of Glenda. Do you have any questions you want to follow up on our presentation with Counsel Cromwell or Gerlach? On the right, on the left, Counsel.
Thank you so much again for coming and being with us here today and the wonderful work that STARS does. That's all we can say is thank you. The gratitude is huge.
Thank you.
Counselor Gerlach. Yeah, I think that sometimes the number of calls that we have in this area is really irrelevant to the big picture because as citizens of the province, we all should be sticking together to to provide a service that everybody read across the province. So seeing the statistics is to me somehow a little bit irrelevant because it's, it's the purpose that it serves and it serves everybody. And we should participate on behalf of our citizens in this constituency.
Thank you. I did neglect to say too, you know, when we're looking at the mission stats that happened within Athabasca County, but it does not mean like there'll be even up to hundreds of calls and requests that came from your hospitals where we are still providing critical care, even though we didn't respond, or we sent a different response, whether it was to coordinate for fixed wing or, you know, ground ambulance or rendezvous, but doesn't mean that our transport physicians are not providing critical care. And I would like to pass on as well, I was in Sandy Lake yesterday to meet with M D of Opportunity. They've been, like yourselves, a long-term supporter as well. And they did want to pass on gratitude and thanks because I was telling them about working with you in order to get the fuel cache replacement there at the airport now, which also benefits their residents, especially when we lost the fuel at Wabaskop and not being able to, now we can reach there again. So I did impress upon them that that is, you know, a great united partnership with bordering neighbors, right? And that that's benefiting their residents. So they do offer their gratitude for that.
And every, every, seems to me, every, every patient that's transported by STARS also keeps a ground ambulance in service for someone else. And in rural areas, I know we, some of us were, heard Rob Brown speak the other day and and when those ambulances leave town, there, there's not always, there's not always another one sitting here waiting if, when it takes off to move someone to the city. So I think to me, it's especially important.
Absolutely.
If there are no further questions, I'll thank you for, thank you for the the photo and for, for the work you do for us.
Well, it's a pleasure to work with each one of you, believe me. And that brand new next year's calendar is out, the fortieth anniversary. There's going to be, have a look at it. There's lots of different details in there over the forty years, so quite interesting. So we brought you a couple of the new calendars. They are available online. But please pass this on to your fire department because we really love them. They are instrumental in being able to help us.
We'll make sure Chief Shalapai gets that.
Okay. Thank you so much. Great to see you. Thank you.
And again, appreciate your patience from the late start. Counselor. Do we want to return to seven point one? Let's, I'm going to say for personal reasons, let's take a two, five, a break till quarter to, just to recharge coffees and and, and then we'll reconvene and try to wrap that seven point one up before before lunch, before we do recess, Counsel Cromwell, are you willing to move? We enter closed again?
So moved. On the question of the adoption of the motion to return to closed session, all those in favor? Opposed, count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Open the door. We should open the doors and make sure if the reporters want to see the vote, they're able to. Do they? We'll just double check and then we'll vote and break for lunch. Just as a procedural, okay. So Counselor Cromwell, did you want to state your motion? Or do you want me to state it for you? The wording I wrote down was to uphold and confirm the compliance order. With the date of August fourteenth, two thousand. And this is related to the accessory building. Correct. Okay, so Counsel Cromwell has moved to uphold and uphold and confirm the compliance order and substituted date of August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, related to the accessory building. All those in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and one, and the motion is adopted. Counselor Minz has made a motion to uphold and confirm it, the compliance order regarding the fence with a substituted date of August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. All those in favor? Opposed, the count is five and four, and the motion is adopted. Let's break for lunch. Is everybody okay with twenty minutes to try to get out of here at a reasonable time? So half past twelve, I'm going to start.
Hey, Jordan, you can turn the mics on. It is half past twelve, and I'd like to reconvene the July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four Athabasca County Council meeting. All of council is present. We are returning to item six point two, which was tabled in order to address a time bound delegation. The motion on the floor, as a reminder, is the recommended motion that council approve those capital projects, keep ceiling on as identified in your agenda, engineering, and that they bring admin bring back a list of hard surfacing projects ranked based on our policy. Um, I think no one had spoken to it, but I'm going to open the floor to the CIO.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, before you broke for the delegation, I think there was a question about CBFF. And some financing, what was included in budget, what we could use it for. So I've asked Mr. MTAS to bring in those sections of the the adopted bylaw. He's going to hand out those pages or we will hand out those pages. And then it'll show which projects we've got for that, but there's a fair bit of flexibility in the grants, fair bit.
Thank you. Sorry, this is C. Cat Canada Community Building Funds, right, CCBF? And so on the second page, we've got some money there. Okay. Did you want to speak to it anymore, CIOs?
Chairman, the only thing I would point out is whatever we decide to do, we're running out of room on the MSI. There's a deadline for us to use the remaining MSI. So we would tell you that we would warn you if we, if for some reason you can't pick a project, we'll come back and say, let's do this project because I thought it was this year was the last of MSI after that and leave it on the table. It's gone.
So it's eligible for the projects that are currently recommended?
Yep. But we've got, we've got some in here that are up for discussion that use some MSI, just so you know that.
Take the motion, Councilor. Look like you have a thought you want to share. Let's open the floor for for discussion.
I'll let Councilor Wallack go first while I compile my thought.
I'm sorry, Councilor.
I guess so for clarification that I guess to Councilman's maybe the CC, CCBF funding. What are you looking for? Like, how much or what? What's the what?
It 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 looks like in there it's a million dollars, right? Yeah. That's what I was looking for is how much do we get on the? How much funding do we get there? It's a million dollars, so that's what my question was. Now I guess we can discuss where we want to put it. And it can actually go to bridges and 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 stuff like that. So it can go to bridges and 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 stuff like that. So what I was gonna say is how or another question that I had, if I may, is is just regarding the El Pac Bridge. Any more information regarding that of where we're sitting?
Yeah, Ms. Chairman, we've been working on that file the last week. Um, even had a meeting with Al Pac this morning, a Zoom meeting. Really, the at best case scenario, it's too late in the year. We we can't tender and build anything in twenty four anyways. It's really a twenty five project. And so we reviewed that with our bridge engineers. We're not, it's not imminently going to fail in the next year. So we could do some things that can repair the deck a little bit, do some crack ceiling, do some patching. And we'll get through to twenty twenty five, but we really have to start thinking about it as a twenty twenty five project and bite the bullet. And if it involves the province, that's great. Otherwise, it's got to be done.
I would be willing to make a motion regarding not that we make that an actual project just due to the fact that of of getting that bridge to to decent working order.
But there is a motion on the floor, but like subsequent follow.
Later on, you betcha, because we we can't, we can't just say because the province isn't going to help us out that that we should let that go again. Let's look at the Lesser Slave River and their Smith Bridge, seventy million, if not more that they're looking for and the province isn't budgeting. They're not going to budge for us. They're not. It's if we need to do maintenance on 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 these bridges, that's that's proven fact. So that's the Cape Seal, regarding the Cape Seal. My understanding that's got the saw cement portion in there too also. So that's that's a great thing. If we need to due to mobilization of of the equipment and that, if it's if it makes it easier to do one job. You know, we can discuss that instead of doing two different locations, do one location and do a do a bigger stretch than.
Director, do you want to just speak to that?
Through the chair to Councilor Minz. Yes, there will be extra mobilization costs. If you do both areas, there are two proposed at the airport, one to the airport, and then one continuing on going north, which is a heavy traffic road in the same way you suggested Greenleaf is. So if you wanted to do just the one location, then the recommendation would be the airport.
Is is there a reason just then to like, is the mobilization a significant issue that we should take into account in terms of cost and hassle and?
Yes, Mr. Chair, mobilization is always a large portion of projects and the area by Greenleaf is not a very large span to be done. So the mobilization would be your a large portion of that cost. So.
Councilman's floor remains yours.
Yeah. So what I was thinking is if we say, take take the section of road off by Green Leaf and and put on the the road. What would it be? The Township Road going into the airport? What is that? Three, four hundred meters, three hundred meters? And then if we're going to want to do a mile, then we do. We do twelve, thirteen hundred meters to to the north on the Range Road.
And and both from the way the motion's written, both the one running on Township Road six six eighty two on the long south side of the airport. Looks like that's part of it.
No, not six eighty two. No, it's six. Six, what would that be?
Six eighty two in here.
Yeah, six eighty two is up in the mill. No, that's a Range Road. From from the asphalt. So north is Range Road. Yeah. Yeah. And it'd be the Township Road going into the airport. Six, six, four. Yeah. That would be a much better desired area. So plus the other thing, again, I go back to, I go back to having it close to Athabasca. In in more, more people will look at it instead of putting it up and you know, they'll they'll go out there and see how this process is done and how it holds up. And it's it's much better to monitor than throwing it up in the middle of nowhere and going from there. So that would be my suggestion. I don't know if we need a motion to do that. Because if we do, I'll do that.
So you want to amend the, you want to amend the motion to delete the portion of the half mile near Greenleaf?
Yeah. Okay.
Our. Mr. Chairman, just before you do that, like, perhaps we just seek our, we'll issue RFPs and we'll do as much as we can, as we can do with the what if it's a hungry market and they, we can do it all.
No.
So why don't we just issue it? And but the budget is what it is. We'll do as much as we can. How's that? But the the first one that gets dropped is that one. So you've got a motion, it's fine. We would, we would just seek RFPs from somebody. There's a chance we won't even get any respondents. It's it's getting late in the year. So
and so Councilman's, you're, I haven't repeated your amendment, so we're we're good. Okay?
No, we're good. I think everybody's on the understanding of of what we're trying to do there.
I think I had Councilor Holland on deck and then Councilor Anderson.
Thank you. With regards to the price that we're sitting at for the Colton Bridge, the replacement with the funds that we've already put towards it for engineering and whatnot, I know we have two point one, three, six in this particular request for decision. And in the budget, it's two point one, two, seven, but I believe the last meeting it was one point four was left over. Can we get in what the actual what we have left to pay for the, if we were to place the Carlton Bridge? Because we we already put money towards it. So yeah, I've just got different figures, trying to figure out which ones belong.
Through the chair to Councilor Holland. The money you've allocated previously in council was for the engineering of the removal, not the engineering of a new bridge. So the number in front of you is the budgeted number for new bridge and replacement. Thank you.
Council, Council Captain.
And is there a ability to use MSI funding for any of those bridge? For that bridge project, that any, anything on that bridge project?
Uh, through the charity council Capitania, we can apply for MSI for engineering. Yes.
Thank you.
Let's come on. So yours.
Thank you. You all know what I'm going to ask. I'm going to I'm going to ask if there's any way, any appetite that we can add the modern connector for our hard surfacing and get it done. We have funding source for up to a million dollars, leaving that project at two point six. Our unrestricted surplus, as on page twenty five, twenty one of your financial statement, is twenty one point four, seven, eight million. We have the funds to get it done, and I will repeat, this is a very good time to get that project done. I am confident that it is very high and perhaps not the highest when we get that report back. But we do have the time to get that project completed or began, rather.
Well, I think this one probably unless there's objections, we we probably want to come around a couple of times. So I'll I'll just keep trying, but try to make sure everybody gets through once first.
Yeah, I like the motion. I like the the bringing back to the rate ranking by from the policy before we move ahead with any financing for anything. So yeah, I just, I think I think the motion is good. I think we should move forward with these things and think it just get moving on projects.
Yeah, Councilors, thoughts? Mike?
Well, I do like the idea of getting the connector done, but I mean, really sitting down and looking where our budget at is at first is most important. I'm going to need some time to think about it.
Councilor Anderson, you haven't spoken.
I just like to clarify, I think in the motion, the reference to Township Road six eight two is supposed to be Township Road six, six, four.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Okay, thank you.
So the there's no objection to the administrative fix of putting six, six, four instead of six, eight, two on that motion, which is what we were talking about. Councilor, you after dinner now? Any comments?
I was just wondering about the possibility, the Councilman's brought up the idea of the private road bypass as opposed to to construction of the bridge at Colton. Just wondering where, if that was going anywhere.
Uh, we we had a, that came to a vote at beneath the hole and council declined to even consider. So that's I can't remember. So I think that was going nowhere. I think it's, I mean, so I'll speak to this to start with, I guess, and say that I think it's important. We we figure out some some projects. I think it's critical that we have a defendable way to to explain how we choose stuff. We have a policy and I I like that administrate, the motion tells admin to rank these projects and bring them back to us based on a way that's transparent and equitable and not, you know, based on anything other than a, you know, an objective ranking criteria and adhering to a policy that's in place. And I mean, I'm disappointed that we didn't see that list sooner as part of the 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 project, but we are where we are. And so I think in order to move ahead, it still would make the most sense for us to see that list of priorities. And so that we make sure we're making the right decision. We're talking about spending a lot of money and to do it in a way that's that's fair and equitable makes sense to me.
I definitely agree with that. I'd like to to see a list. For many years, there's been talk of a list, and I know that I've had questions from well, one specific person on Tower Road and hate to bring another to the conversation, but you know, for many, many years, we've heard that road was on a list and I don't know if that is the case or not, because before we sat in these chairs, how would we know? So just another community that has questions, just not even specifically, you know, are we going to get it or when we're going to get it? But is it even being considered? And so a list of priorities would then answer questions for everyone in the districts, different districts where there are roads that could potentially benefit from paving.
Councilor Holland, you had waved a minute ago. Did you want the floor again?
It was actually answered, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Everybody's been around once. Is there an appetite to add further comment? Or are we ready for the question on the motion is? Is there anything more to add that would add value? For yours.
Just through the chair to administration, if we pass this motion, do we use our MSI grade?
Through the chair to Councilmen's for clarification, do we use it or will we use it all?
Yeah, will we use it all?
We're quite confident that we can utilize all of the MSI this year.
Thank you.
So if you're ready for the question, the question is on the adoption of the motion to approve the following capital projects to commence in the twenty twenty four capital year. Cape Sealing on the road north of Highway fifty five adjacent to the airport, which is Township Road six, six, four and on Road Township. Is that other, is that the is that the Township Road by Greenleaf? Anyway, to the airport. By six eighty three? So six eighty three? I think so. Okay, so the so the council approves the following capital projects in the twenty twenty four year Cape Sealing on the road north of Highway fifty five adjacent to the airport, which is Township six, six, four. And I think we said also rain, there's the Range Road on that was we're doing the range. The motion was to do across the base of the airport. Two, 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 one? Okay, so just without reading the motion, then it's the road south of the airport, which is Range Road, uh, sorry, township Road six, six, four. And the one on the west side of the airport, which is Range Road two, two, one. And then um. Six eight, six eighty three, which is the township road that runs past Greenleaf Fuels. So the administration will work toward getting those done. So the approves the following capital projects to commence in the twenty twenty four year, keep ceiling on the road north of Highway fifty five and adjacent to the airport. Which is Range Road two twenty one and across south of the airport, Township Road six, six, four and west um. Of Range Road one ninety five adjacent to Greenleaf Fuels, which is Township Road six eighty three. Also for engineering for replacement of bridge file one, three, eight, three, three in Collington. And further that council directed men to compile a list of capital hard surfacing projects for a five-year capital plan to be brought back. To the twenty twenty five budget deliberation based on the priority rankings of policy thirty two, forty three. On the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed? The count is seven and two and the motion is adopted. Councilmen's, did you want to talk about the Alpac? Bridge for twenty twenty five, I think we've already identified it as a, as a priority project, but.
Yeah, I don't know if we need an actual motion uh through, to the chair to administration. Do we need an actual motion to say that we want that or that?
I thought we identified that in minutes already. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, actually, uh, the person that I was speaking with at Alpac wished to take it back to his management group and have a review, so. I think we'd probably have uh another motion for you before we go into budget deliberation. So maybe at the August meeting. You're happy? The next item of business on the agenda, uh, seven point two, Counselor Holland. I'm gonna vary unless there's objection from the floor, vary from our normal path of asking for a motion and, and uh really because this is. First time we've seen this, just open the floor for discussion unless uh someone at the table objects. But you put it on the table, go ahead. Is, are there any questions on um the report? Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out, um, thanks to uh Mr. MTS and, and uh. Director Amblay for putting this together. This is our first attempt with our new software, uh, Questica, so. We're not all there yet. Uh, we'll just, we'll just admit it. Uh, it's gonna take some playing to get to where. We feel is a good adequate report for council. So this is the first one using Questica. So it doesn't do everything that we need. Uh, but they're gonna continue working on it until it gives the information that council uh deserves. Let's put it that way. And I, I, I'll, you know, point out that you have identified that it's not fully populated. And that we've got data to June seventeenth, which. Um, and we've talked about this at other, some others who've sat with me in other committee meetings will have heard me sort of object to mid-period. Financial statements because you end up with some. An improper matching, you get some expenses that are already coded, but certain other things that occur only at the end of the month that aren't in. So it, it can have a tendency to distort a little bit. And so just so that we're all aware that. Some things that you would think would be regular and, and should be at exactly fifty percent by the end of June. Won't necessarily reflect that in here because this is as of the middle of June. That could be payments to the waste commission or, or, or similar bodies. I felt like there were a few places in here where. Some things maybe I. Feel like they're miscoded where, you know, some, some items are five thousand percent of budget and the next one is at zero and it. It just looks like where it's landing, so. I, I'm not gonna personally grill you on those things because uh. I know that'll get, get fixed. And so, since I have the floor and I'll keep on with that, I don't have a lot of other questions for you. I appreciate that this is the first goal and. I look forward to seeing for me this on a more regular basis and um it becoming more useful so that we can. We can use it to, to assess where we are and how we're doing. Uh, the example I, I kind of had a note on was uh protective services. I'm, I'm guessing some of this uh. The overage in contracted services relates to the police funding model. That's on page seventy five. We're six uh. And I, I have to miss, I misspoke earlier. I said five thousand percent. It's only five hundred ninety one percent. I don't want that in the paper. Five thousand percent over budget.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, it's just a matter of miscoding and uh we just have to work on it internally between departments and how we are coding all invoices. But moving forward, I think uh you'll see a much better report and better percentages with variances.
It's, it's forward progress. Uh, thank you for the work you've got so far, and I'm, I know how much work that can be to change systems. Counselor Holland, you had your hand up and then councilman.
Thank you so much. Um, and I, I echo, I appreciate all the effort that's going into this. It's, it's huge. I understand the job is massive. So thank you so much for all the work you're putting into it. I, I like to see personally just a bit more detail. And so I'm curious whenever I see, um, I believe it's on page seventy. And of course, within regards to every other um, the general ledger account, but the code two ninety, two, twenty nine ninety other. And it's at seventy one point three four percent. What is other?
Just, could I, could I just add a clarification? So when, when that column is a high number, it means they're under budget.
Okay, but I'm still curious what other is.
No, okay, we just, so we.
Got it. Thank you.
So usually, um, we have a generic set of a- accounts that you can see starting with like goods and supplies, equipment. Uh, transportation, salaries and wages, but um then there's some other, other would be. The less common accounts that we don't usually use. So uh one-off type of items would usually go in other. Uh, I can look uh specifically into um. The, this one particularly and see what's quoted in there for sixty one thousand. Give me a couple of minutes and I can look in the budget and I can get back to you.
I appreciate that. Yeah, no, whenever you have time, that's great. Um, and just with the quick follow-up. Um, the twenty two, ten, transportation and comms. Um, can we get a bit of description of what that is, please?
So usually that would be uh internet or uh telephone slash cellphone.
Okay, and but transportation and comms?
Yeah, um, it's just, I would ignore the transportation. It's just a generic, it's just a generic per, per the MGA, like our accounts just follow. Uh, what the legislation says, uh, the counts should be. So that's the order that we kind of uh set them up with. So just because it says transportation and communication uh doesn't necessarily. I guess what I would do going forward, I'll break these out a bit more so you can see what's exactly in them. Um. Because I can break out each account into further um subaccounts, so you can see what exactly the breakdown is. Here, there is no transportation and there is just usually communications, which is telephone or internet.
Counselor Holland, because this is sort of our first time seeing this, would you find it okay if we asked maybe at a committee, the whole meeting for just a presentation where? Um, you know, Mr. MTS coming, can say, let's get into each of these and. Cause I, I have a feeling that once we start seeing them regular, we'll look at that and go, I, I got that. I know what's in there. We're good. Um, so I've got Counselor Minz, Chamsak, Wallack in that order.
Thanks, uh, I won't be long, because you pretty well answered my question, because there, there was about three questions on contracted services, so it's. So through what you're, what you're looking at is more of where it's actually coded to. And that it to, to bring it back into.
Yeah, it's just a matter of, um, you'll see, I'll, I'll give uh. Just a example of if you, even if you look at the fire protection, you'll see um how the goods and supplies were budgeted forty eight hundred and fifty dollars. Yet we have al- almost eighty thousand there. Um, but if you look just under it, you'll see equipment, machine and vehicle supplies. Which is budgeted a hundred and seventy two thousand nine hundred. We only have fourteen thousand sitting in there. So it's just a matter of. Where, where they should, they should have been allocated to the proper account to equipment, machine and vehicle supplies, but majority is being quoted to goods and supply. So it's just a matter of educating uh some of the staff too, so they can understand the difference between what should be. Quoted as goods and supplies and what should be quoted as vehicle or uh equipment supplies, basically.
Yeah, and I remember trying to do some of this coding the old way and, and uh. My filing cabinet over in Public Works was totally different numbers coming over here. And, and uh, yeah, it was quite the, I tried to match that and it was like holding up. It was way out of the lap in my mind. Um, page seventy on the, on the main, uh, the beginning one. And I think you've probably answered that question with that uh construction and maintenance uh, uh, twenty five thirty. Uh, budget seventy thousand, um. Two million. So, so that's probably the same thing, right?
Perfect. To the chair to compliments, yes, that's exactly it. Um, it's most likely, again, if you look at the equipment vehicle. Uh, equipment, machine and vehicle, uh, it's budgeted for two million, yet there's only four hundred and sixty five thousand sitting there, so. Yeah, and I will do a better job going forward of uh adjusting those before I present it to council.
Thank you. It's a big job. Thank you.
I had Counselor Chamsak next. It's, it's quite nice and it's not an Excel spreadsheet.
Having to do books in the past and learning new geo codes, I know how unfun that that can be. I was just wondering in the future, whenever at your convenience, we can just get better clarification between geo codes two thirty, two fifty and two seventy. Just so I have a better understanding of how things fit in. Two fifty, two thirty, two fifty and two seventy. Uh, professional services, special services, contracted services, miscellaneous contracted and general services. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Wallack, you're on deck?
Great job. I think um. Council reads through the, the following pages. There are codes and it does break down what division those things are under, so. I think there's a pretty good breakdown of, of what you've done. Um, and if we look in our budget, we probably can find what all these things are.
Uh, Counselor Gerlock or Capitonic, do you have questions? Uh, Counselor Holland, did you want to move a motion to accept the uh statements? Counselor Holland has made a motion to accept the financial statements as to. To receive the financial statements as presented on the question of the adoption of the motion to receive the statement as presented, all those in favor? Opposed? Very, so we are seven and zero and the motion is adopted. Thank you for uh moving us beyond the Excel age, direct, uh, director, you and your teams. We have Counselor Minz, you wanted to make a motion regarding number seven point three.
Make the recommended.
Uh, your page eighty nine.
I'll make the uh recommended motion.
So Councilman's has moved the council approved twenty five thousand to come from general reserves for building maintenance, office furniture and IT requirements for the. Main and mill administration building. The floor remains yours.
I guess, and, and, and uh hopefully I don't get beat down here. I'm just wondering if, if being that we're gonna have so much room over in here. And I know that there's so much less room over at the shop. Are we gonna bring people back from over there to join? Administration here?
Through the Chair to Counselor Minz, uh, it hasn't been decided yet who will be doing what.
Okay, yeah, because I know that there's a real lack of space over there for, for, and, and another really good reason to get a new shop.
Since I've been on council, I've never been in that building. Always spent many a years in that building. Counselor Chamsak, for yours.
I just have a question. These switches that uh in, that were required to were purchased, would they be similar to the forty switches that are required for? Our county libraries as well?
Through the Chair to Counselor Chamsak, um. I haven't looked at the technology in the libraries, so I'm unwilling to answer a yes or no. But switches are generally switches, so.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, other questions on that one? Okay, on the question of the adoption of the motion, the council approved twenty five thousand to come from general reserve. For building maintenance, office, furniture and IT requirements for the main administration building, all those in favor? Opposed? The count is uh eight and zero and the motion is adopted. Mr. Chair, could I just add one thing? Should have uh pointed it out during the item, but doesn't matter. Um, from the earliest estimates we got from our consultants, we're expecting this to be about a hundred. Okay, and so with uh Ms. Whaley working on it, she managed to get it down to a far more manageable number. So when she brought back the update, we were very happy. I, I, I know the switch like. Internet switching is a, the ones I've paid for are surprisingly expensive and, and the scale that we were on here, it would be a. I think you've done really well to get the cost on it for Councilmen's.
Was all the wiring removed? Can, can we use the same wiring?
Through the Chair to Councilmen's, no, the, the wiring has remained. It's just a matter of patching in.
Uh, we have seven point four. Counselor Holland, you wanted to make a motion regarding seven point four. Uh, that's on page ninety one.
I would like to actually pass a motion to um donate through the C A O's discretion, the silent auction items. For um the kickbox, kickboxing sponsorship request.
Oh, so the Holland has made a motion to donate some silent auction items to help with the. To donate some silent auction items to the kickboxing sponsorship request. So the motion is to donate silent auction items to the kickboxing sponsorship request. Do you want to speak? Get some gravel. Counselor Holland, do you want to speak to the motion? Uh, get the final word as well, remember.
Uh, I'm hearing there's a, a request for a specific type of, of silent auction item, um, which was gravel. Um, I mentioned discretion of the C A O, but do you have a dollar costs for that? And that'd be your idea?
I, I, I don't have um a, an amount of cost, but I do, I can speak to the fact that um. This useful resource that we have as a county actually brings in really good. Um, funding when we have donated in the past to other um events and, and requests, surprisingly, uh. An item that gets bid on by many people. And so if that was something that pleased this council, I'm, I would support donating gravel. To, to, I, I don't even know what, what would do, say a small driveway, but would that be with one truckload? There you go. That seems like, I think that's what we did last time. It seems reasonable.
Uh, so microphone, please, if you're gonna interact.
I guess we're just determining delivering, delivering within.
No, the original motion was leave it to the C A O's discretion. Do we want to narrow that? Do you want to amend it? Do you just leave it to the C A O?
I would, it's your motion, go ahead.
Well, I, I think in the donation request policy, it's a certain dollar amount, whereas the gravel would be uh an increased dollar amount, so.
Counselor Wallack?
Um, what are we donating to? Because our online auction is over as of yesterday. Yeah, so.
Okay, so that would make the motion kind of uh.
But they're. So I don't, what was the request? What was it for? It doesn't really say in here.
Uh, the, it's on page ninety two. It's to cover their personal stuff.
I know, but what event or? Well, I know, but like they have a couple of things going on. So what was the specific request? I understand, but what fundraising?
Just, just.
What, what fundraising event are they asking for?
If we didn't like. So there is a motion on the floor to make a donation, um. Counselor, well, the floor remains yours.
So there is another event on September. So there is another event on September twenty-eighth that they're fundraising for. So uh, it's a kickboxing event or M M A event in Perryville.
Okay.
I have to think about this now.
So, Counsel Wall, further thoughts?
That's all I had to question.
Can I, I'm gonna jump in and say, we we don't have a grant policy for individuals or adults, that's in the program. I'm um, not able to support anything that would donate resources in this direction when it's so narrow and focused to a couple of adults who are doing an adult sport that is their own thing. Um, if it was, you know, broad, broad spectrum community group or uh, youth where there's a number of children, I think that that's a different story, but um, the the reality is the county doesn't have a grant policy for individuals and adults and uh, I don't know. I, I think this is, would be an error to um, start off on this path, because then when I want to take up, uh, you know, barrel racing, can I come get a sponsorship for new shops or? Anyway, uh, so I, I, you'd like to see that, that would be a show, uh, Counselor Capitanic and then uh, Chamsik.
Um, while I respect your your view and I do agree, obviously, we don't have a policy that covers this and maybe that's something we need to look at. The reason that I am happy that that conversation got opened is because these are not just two adults that are in a sport, they are adults that are leaders and mentors in our community to youth that use sports to teach them discipline and respect and sportsmanship values, their their business in our community and their and their they're almost so good that they have waiting list for some of their things, you know, people want their children to be taught by Josh. Um, even isn't it, or well, he's the one that runs the the. Uh, Terrell is there as well, he doesn't own it, but.
This is, we're we're not talking about the Perryville thing, this is a, this is a request from two adults who would like to.
Yes, but they train and they work with Josh and they do train kids too, to help us, yeah.
But.
So these are adults in that club that also mentored youth because of that club, and I want to point out that it's not just two random people, whether we support it or not, that's why I wanted to open that conversation. Because it is affecting youth when they see their leaders going on and representing their community and doing great things and inspires them.
Uh, Counselor Chums.
I a hundred percent agree with that. Um, and I think we do need to uh, bring back this policy to a policy committee anyways, as um, I believe some of other other policies within our school system recognize students at a different age than we do as well and it's something that we should consider if there ever was a nineteen-year-old student going to an event, why they should or should not be excluded.
Yeah, we haven't heard from Counselor Gerlick, Anderson, Cromwell or Minz. Is Cromwell's usual, unusual that you're completely silent, do you have a view you want to share? I probably listened to.
How the heck do I respond to that? I agree that you know, promotion and and helping out our locals is important, but I'm sticking to policy and what we do not have, our policy is directed toward youth. And I would not be in support of using taxpayer funds uh, for this venture, though I do applaud them and I wish them well. I think it would be too pressing setting, especially without having a policy to fall back upon to to go ahead and allocate that money. I agree, it's something we can talk about in the future, but as far as my vote will be considered, I cannot move forward with that on those grounds, but I wish them all the best of luck.
Uh, Counselor Gerlick, did you want to weigh in? Minz, Anderson. Um, are you ready for the question? Well, that's what I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Ms. Blair to read the question, because I didn't write it down and um, Ms. Blair, are you able to read the question for us?
Moved by Counselor Holland to donate some silent auction items at the discretion of the C A O to the kickboxing sponsorship request.
So, is everybody clear on the motion? On the question of the adoption of the motion, all those in favor? Opposed? Count is three and six and the motion fails.
Motion to bring the policy back to policy place.
Um, yeah, that's absolute. Counselor Chamsik would, has made a request to bring the policy to a future policy review meeting. I'm hoping, looking at it in, but I'm thinking the best I'm going to im- imagine that their preferred course of action be to not make it date bound and just put it in the list of uh, there, C A O Beck, do you want to speak?
Mister Chairman, that'd be great, um. It should be noted that we've all already identified this as a huge gap that we would like corrected, there's the policies we have here are um challenging, let's put it that way, uh, when you compare it to other places.
I personally appreciate that you're working and your team to make them better. And and I think uh, council certainly in the understands there's priorities and figuring out the timing is good, so. Counselor Chamsik has made a motion to uh, direct administration to bring this uh, to to bring policy or lack of policy back to a future policy review meeting. Um, is there any discussion on that? Seeing none. For the question, the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed, count is nine and zero and that's adopted. We are at item numbers seven point six and I have Counselor Minz, you had wanted to make a motion.
I'll do the recommended. I'll do the recommended motion to receive the report for information, I just wanted to uh, thank administration on uh, on kind of like behalf of the Trappers Ball Association for the, for the promotional items, I I know they went over very well with the MVP player awards and that and uh, there's not a kid out there, I don't think that doesn't like fish hooks, so thank you very much for your support on that and council for all your support.
Counselor Minz has moved the recommended motion to receive the port, report for information, Counsel Cromwell, do you like to address?
Completely agree, um, when the heck do we get fish hooks?
And why don't we all have one?
No, that that is news to me, when I was reading this agenda, I'm going, we have a fish hook? I love. We'll, we'll do this after session, thank you.
On just in a, in addressing the motion, I'd like to say that I think it's absolutely ridiculous, the C A O has, like, we give this uh, individual discretion to spend fifty thousand dollars unbudgeted uh, uh, at his own uh, discretion on significant items and um, th- this kind of reporting, I think, could be better handled and would hope that, you know, it's some future time we can amend this, because I think that, you know, if the C A O is donating a hundred dollars for the stuff, an email to us to know that the county's supporting an event is great, but I I feel like this is a waste of time in in an agenda package when they've got so much else to do. And that's kind of tied to the motion, Counselor uh, Chamsik.
I do agree with you for the most part, but it is also nice for some of these organizations to have the publicity, that's all I'm gonna say.
Further um, comments? On the question of the adoption of the motion to receive the report for information, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and that motion is adopted. Uh, seven point seven, Counselor Cromwell, I have your name beside wanting to make a motion relate for here.
Yes, to ever see that report for information or that presentation.
Counsel Cromwell has made a motion to receive the Stars Foundation presentation for information. Is there any discussion on that item, Counselor Minz?
Good. I amend the motion to to uh, go to the fifteen thousand? Or or not?
I think they're probably um, inconsistent with each other, but um, we could handle with either a second motion or just in the budget discussion.
I would, I would like to make the motion to go to, go to the fifteen thousand.
For this year and?
Yeah, for this year, it's only another thousand dollars out of our, out of our budget that that's.
So we'll, we'll come back to you for that, always, because we do have one on the floor. Counselor Holland, do you want to speak to the motion on the floor, or do you want to speak to the motion that might come from Councilman Minz? Unless there's further discussion, if you're ready for the question, that is on the adoption of the motion to receive the Stars Foundation presentation for information, all those in favor? And opposed, the count is eight and one and uh, the motion is adopted. Counselor Minz, would like to make a motion.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to uh, to uh, I wish I had it in front of me, but uh, to go to the fifteen thousand dollar request, uh, due to the fact that it is a great service that that Stars gives to us and 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 gives to the, to the whole province, four provinces and and that, and I I think us us backing, backing them with another thousand dollars is not not out of the question in in my, my point of view, uh, I remember telling the Great Sixers that we had seventy-five hundred people living in Athabasca and and county and and uh, that's what I thought we were at, which would be fifteen thousand at two dollars per capita, so it's like why not, that's.
So C A O Beck, just so that I uh, we process this reasonably, would it be uh, the wording of the motion would be to amend the budget to have the Stars donation be fifteen thousand dollars in the twenty twenty-four and future budgets?
That's, that's a fair motion.
That's accomplished, is what you want?
Exactly what I I wanted.
So the, yeah, the motion on the floor is to amend the twenty twenty-four and future budgets to have the Stars donation recorded at fifteen thousand dollars and that's made by Counselor Minz. And we've got Counselor Holland and then uh, Capitano on it.
Thank you, so just curious, when we had the motion prior, it was two dollars per capita annually, was it two dollars per capita or fourteen thousand? It, it was just two dollars per capita, okay, so the budget is at fourteen. Right, but we mentioned two dollars per capita, so we would have gone up to that two dollars, do we even know what our per capita is?
Our current population?
It's what our, no, what our per capita is, what, where are we at, sixty-nine hundred, seventy-five hundred people, I don't even know where we're at anymore.
Current population.
Yeah, we'll just give the C A, C A O a minute to.
Not that I'm disagreeing, I really like the fifteen thousand dollar even and I like it every year, um, going forward, however, you know, in ten years from now, that's not going to be enough, so I don't know how, you know, with a revisit in uh, in five years, if we can.
Um, so I'll, I'll leave kind of the floor open with you, we'll come back to that when the C A O knows and we'll let Counselor Capitanic jump in to keep things rolling and we'll, we'll come back.
This is where my train of thought was going, so um, I I was a little bit confused when she said to ask to have it as a standing budget line, which I assumed we had already done um, in budget and it was set at that fourteen based on two, we're thinking our population, um, and so in my mind, how I remember us doing it at budget time was that that line would change yearly, though it will be an established line based on our population, so it would be up to next year us, then the future council to determine, did we grow by a hundred people or a thousand people? That there will still be always a Stars line at two per capita, but that it will ideally, administration would change the number as our population fluctuated, so we would not have the kind of alleviating having to make that decision or guess or ask the question. So to me, the number could even be three, like, I mean, if we wanted to be generous, we could make a motion to say three dollars per person. You know, that's just what they're saying is like seventy-five percent of municipalities are doing at two. Um, and that could be maybe future councils want to do that as well. Um, but I do believe, yes, having the line and having administration, do you have the ability to change the number based on our capita is something that just should be done every year.
And it's, it's gonna be, it's in budget every year and census doesn't occur every year.
Yeah.
It's fairly long and stable, so the C A O is, I think it's five-year gaps and.
Okay, so we're kind of like.
C A O?
Yeah, um, and this is, I know we've talked about this in this room before, uh, because it's kind of unbelievable that it dropped be, that much between twenty twenty-one and twenty sixteen. Uh, Statscan says we're at sixty-nine fifty-nine in twenty twenty-one and in twenty sixteen, it said we were at seventy-eight sixty-nine. And everyone in the room finds that kind of hard to believe. You could see it being flat or maybe a little dip, but to have a change of minus eleven point six percent is um, surprising. And I I think questionable. But Statscan says it's at sixty-nine fifty-nine today, Mister Chairman.
Okay, so let's round that to seven thousand, that works out to fourteen. Um, I, uh, Counsel, Counselor, I'm gonna say this and then give the floor to Counsel Cromwell, um, I kind of like rounding to many hours five thousand, but uh, Counsel Cromwell, for yours.
They're, they're asking for two dollars per capita, thank you, they're asking for two dollars per capita based on our current population as maybe correctly or incorrectly reported. Um, and that we have up their line item in our budget for this year, I would be happy keeping it at the fourteen.
Counselor Holland, I had said the floor was, uh, would come back to you, because we're waiting for the answer, so the floor is yours.
Thank you, um. I like the per capita idea, just because, again, it gives the administration the ability to go and and make those adjustments as needed. Um, I would be happy to increase it to two to quarter per capita, which gives us about fifteen-seven of where we're at now. Um, and then then we can see what our population is doing, but that's just just to keep it as an easy even keel for, instead of straight across, then it's all, we don't have to revisit it steady.
And I wonder, um, for, you know, council generally, this is sort of a budget discussion and so to and we're talking about a thousand here or there, I think we tend to be flexible enough to to round up with the budget, but if we, maybe this is a, you know, a bigger discussion at budget time to to talk about, how do we lay it out going forward, because our budgets are you know, multi-year documents and and as we you know, spend time here and better understanding of everything we're doing, I I think we're getting better at our, at our sort of budget forecasts and and to lay out a um, lay that out for the future and to the budget in the, in the fall would be I'm, I'm going to propose to you, that might be the most appropriate method. A small adjustment, like, has been proposed is one thing, but to start getting into the formula and that might be more of a policy discussion that we should do closer to budget, would be my feeling. Counselor Minz, I, you 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 were waving, um, you're the mover, so I'll give you a final word, does anybody else want to talk to? Counsel Gerlick.
I think she also mentioned that we only made a two-year commitment to the end of this, uh, this council's term, and then she was looking for maybe us to make a more solid commitment that we go beyond that to just so that they have the stability.
Do you remember what page this is on?
Yes. No, I am.
Let's just take one moment and quickly look at the, um, ten. Thank you, Director. For anybody that has a copy of your budget nearby, it's on page ten under uh, number twenty-one. And it's uh, it's in the future budget at fourteen thousand out as far as we forecast, which is twenty twenty-eight. Yeah, I think that's a I think that's kind of a note or a guiding note or. What would you like to see happen, Counselor? Are, are you okay doing that through budget processor? Okay, let's put that in your list. So the, the motion on the floor is to uh, increase, to amend the budget, to increase the funding for the twenty twenty-four year and in the future forecast years to fifteen thousand dollars to Stars, Counsel Minz, do you want a final word and then we'll call a question?
Yeah, just a, a quick one, uh, again, okay, the budget is a budget, it's a, it's an estimate. Uh, we changed the budget. Sometimes this is a thousand dollars, we're not talking about about a million or or three point six million or five million or whatever, right? So, so it's uh, uh, it's a, it's a thousand dollars and and uh, and and I think uh, just, I think it's just a good thing to do, you know, it's, it's a, it's a great it's a great service that uh, we get in Athabasca County, we've we've worked with them with Fuel Cash, we got kudos from M D of Opportunity for doing such. We've worked with them with Fuel Cash. We got kudos from MD of Opportunity for doing such, working together with them and, and all that. And it's like. I think it's just a, a good news story to, to forward this for an extra thousand dollars. It's, it's, then we get that little box around our name too.
I kind of think it'll motivate everyone, right?
Gold star, gold box.
Okay, that's, that's what I have. Um, I had said you would get the final word unless there's any other really burning comments. Uh, the question is on the adoption of the motion to amend the budget. To increase funding for Stars to fifteen thousand dollars for twenty twenty-four and in the future budgeting, all those in favor. Opposed, the count is eight and one and the motion is adopted. But if you spent a thousand dollars, I don't, we'd be here. We, uh, does, is everybody okay in terms of timing? I can't, we've been an hour. Does anyone need a break or need to go and get? So let's, let's go through the. And what I was going to propose is we've got two bylaws to, to zip through and then calendars, and we can go close and take a break, or do you want to? He's, uh, Counselor Gerlach sent a twist yarn. Next item of business is item number eight point one. Eight point one is, uh, second reading. Of bylaw zero one two, two zero two four. We had a. Public hearing on this bylaw this morning. Is anyone willing to move second reading? Counselor, uh, Cromwell has moved second reading of bylaw zero one two, two zero two four. Is there any discussion, Counselor? On the question of the adoption of second reading of zero one two, two zero two four, all those in favor. Opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. I saw. Uh, Counselor Anderson moving. Third reading. Of zero one two, two zero two four. It's kind of a tie with Gary and I, um. Is there any, uh, Counselor Anderson has moved third reading of bylaw zero one two, two zero two four. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, she got me off track. On the question of the adoption of the motion of third reading, all those in favor. Opposed, the count is nine and zero and third reading is adopted. Um. Item number eight point two is to give second reading to bylaw zero one eight two zero two four. Counselor Chamsak and then more, uh. See, I didn't look this way. Uh, the, the question is on the adoption of, uh, the motion to give second reading to zero and eight two zero two four. Is there any discussion on that item? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor. Opposed, the count is nine and zero and second reading is adopted. Counselor Wallach has moved third reading of zero one eight two zero two four. Is there any discussion? Last chance, seeing none. Um. On the question of the adoption of the motion to move third reading, all those in favor. Opposed, the count is nine and zero and then motion is adopted. Third reading is approved. Sorry, I'm distracted by how black it is. It's the tape. I'm thinking it's not entirely. Counselor Wallach, you asked to add nine point one to the, uh.
Um. I just wanted to make a comment about the events calendar. Um, since Visit Athabasca basically does the same thing, are we doubling up on admin work here? Should we just add the Visit Athabasca calendar to our correspondence? Instead of having Leah input these, or whoever does it, into the calendar twice?
Well, the Visit Athabasca calendar will be linked to us. So there was a question, is this also on our website? Um, I think the Visit Athabasca calendar, you can link that from the Connie website. Um, with your microphone, Counselor Capitano.
Um, so that actually makes super sense. And if we want to add something to the calendar, we should go to the Visit Athabasca website and put it in there. Yeah, if it's not already there.
Counselor Chamsak, you want to thought, share a thought?
I think the struggle is, is, um, like, for example, um. Um, Atmore has, you know, I reached out to Atmore to see if anything was happening. Every Tuesday, for example, they do their quilting from. Uh, ten to four, they do a monthly, uh, bingo as well, which will be the eighteenth, um. As well. So I'd like to add those things. And I mean, I, I don't know. I guess I could reach out to the Visit Athabasca lady to make sure that she has all those contacts, but I mean, we should also be promoting our. Area places as well for the smaller events that maybe not have those capabilities.
I think partly Counselor Wallach was pointing out that this just comes to us and we're.
It's not on the web. Not on the website at all.
I'd have to double check with Ms. Blair, but this is just for our benefit.
Uh, yeah, so there was a motion of council. I think it originated from, um. Me possibly doing a calendar for all of council events such as conferences, seminars, workshops. And then it kind of evolved into this. So if that was the motion of council.
Further, I think I recall the discussion was, um, you know, council is expected to go to certain community events. Um, it's, this is normal in most places, so we would try to. Put them down on a list so that council is aware of what they are. And it's absolutely normal for counselors to attend and it's absolutely normal if there's an event. Ticket to, uh, if you're attending as a counselor. Somebody should pay.
I think this, um, Counselor Holland is kind of, the root of this idea came from some comments you made and then, uh. Going back and forth and then a motion was made. Do you want to?
Um, I agree. I think that I would also like to see this actually on our website as well. Um, personally, I thought it was, so I, I apologize. I, I wasn't aware. Um, and I do, I think it's extremely important that, um. The people, um, in the public also see these events. They may not. I noticed. Um, Visit Athabasca doesn't actually have all of them on there. I was looking for a couple of things that were not there. So I think that if we're able to. Get our information here, um, at least we know what it is that we want to portray as happening, um. And Visit Athabasca is not Visit Athabasca County. And that's the problem. That's the problem I have, um, when you just have the one name, one town, you know.
Uh, Counselor Wallach.
Sorry, um. I just, it's the Visit Athabasca region now, um. So you can go online and submit. It would just be like you saying it in council. Um, it's very easy and. I just think we're already paying somebody to do this event calendar. Why pay two people to do it? In my opinion, and then just add this to like, add the event calendar from Visit Athabasca. Onto the website or onto our agenda for information. And if you want to submit something as a counselor, just like you do here, you can say it or. Instead of saying it, submit it online.
So, um, this is, we don't, like, we're kind of having a discussion. There's not really a motion on the floor.
Sure, yeah.
Um, what, uh, gen- generally at the table, Counselor Holland, or sorry, Counselor Wallach has proposed. Um. That we just print the Visit Athabasca calendar or Visit Athabasca Region calendar and insert that. And my assumption is things get to this calendar because counselors send them to Ms. Blair. Wouldn't it be just as easy to send them to the Visit Athabasca calendar and skip the middle woman?
Um, for example, August sixteenth, um, in the Rocky Lane Fairways. Um, that's in my division. I knew nothing about it, so I wouldn't have submitted that. Um, so who would have? Do you know what I'm saying?
No, I didn't.
Is this coming up from?
Ms. Blair, do you want to?
Yeah.
But it, but all the same, if it was on the Visit Athabasca calendar, you'd know too.
I did get some of this information off the Visit Athabasca calendar.
Counselor Anderson would like the floor.
I just. I believe that council asked for calendar or list to be distributed to council. It's an administrative operational matter of which resource they use. Or what they choose to distribute and I don't want to micromanage which calendar they're sending us, so. I just think that you're kind of getting off into the weeds here, asking which calendar is going to be included versus. Sticking to the topic of, we just want to be informed of the events that we can attend if we need.
So what I've just heard is, uh, we don't need to change anything. And it's up to Ms. Blair which calendar she prints and sticks in the agenda. Does that satisfy everybody? I think. Everybody seems happy. Counselor Holland is smiling. Leah is smiling. I, I like the idea of knowing stuff that's constant, but I, I'm, okay. Um, council correspondence, we need a motion to adopt that. Counselor, um. Wallach brought this to the table, so she'll have the privilege of moving the motion to receive the council correspondence for information. Any further discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion to receive council correspondence for information, all those in favor. Opposed, count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. We have, uh, the other calendars, number nine point two next, and this is all that's standing between you and getting soaked with a cigarette. Sorry. Uh, let's just start with, uh, start with Counselor Minns and work her way around. Give anything you want to add? Hey, Counselor Holland, Counselor Chamsak. Counselor Wallach.
Uh, next Monday, the twenty-sixth, the healthcare meeting. Alright, sorry, not the twenty-sixth. We're in, never mind, that's August. Never mind.
Counselor Chamsak, back to you.
Nevermind, sorry.
Counselor Anderson, Capitano.
I got one, uh, September eighteenth.
The name change?
Yeah, I know, it's like. But, you know, it's like. So, um. Community futures, February eighteen.
In Westlock? Counselor Gerlach. Of which month?
It's coming up.
It, it, yeah, they don't seem to print forward. July don't print on the August column. Counselor Cromwell, do you have, um, do you want to add some?
I have nothing to add for my world, but maybe August fourth, reminder, send Joe a happy birthday message.
We have to go into closed session to disclose that? Um, is there someone willing to move the calendars as amended? Counselor?
Just a note, we've highlighted, uh, Road to Hope. Uh, this is a budgeted item by council every year. You just need to figure out who's going to attend.
Okay, so if you are interested in attending, uh, can we leave it where you contact Ms. Blair? Ms. Blair is happy with that. That seems good. Um, and Counselor Cromwell is willing to move a motion to accept the calendars as amended. I had a note on mine, uh. Typically, the county hosts the meeting of the town, village and county councils, tri-council meeting in the fall. Um, do we want to, uh, consider asking administration to start looking at some dates and, and getting organized with them? And we'd have to. I think in conjunction with that, and why I want to bring it up today is we've got a committee, the whole meeting coming up next, uh, month. Um, think we should have a real careful discussion about what are the real priorities there and it. I think it would be wise just to try to start narrowing the focus of those two top three priorities that are really critical for all of us and make them more productive and, um, focused. So if we want to start organizing a date, we can also add it to the agenda for Kyle to talk about our priorities that we propose, but I wanted to obviously float it for your approval. Counselor Holland?
I believe the town was going to discuss their dates on the thirteenth of August or something like that.
They host in the spring. I'm not content to leave it to them. They couldn't organize it for the spring.
Okay.
Um. And if, if it happens that we both want it, like, we can figure that out, but I don't. For me, waiting to see if they do something is not okay. They had plenty of time to figure it out in this part. That's just my personal. Councilor Minns?
Did we? If I remember right, we didn't even have one with the town this year, how we, no, so. Oh, yeah.
Hat backs. Um, so. Is, uh. Counselor Cromwell has made.
I can make that as an amendment to my motion.
Counselor Cromwell has made a motion and you want to say it?
To accept the calendars as amended and direct administration to research dates for the upcoming fall tri-council meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, Counselor Cromwell has made a motion to accept the calendar as amended and to direct administration to begin planning dates for an upcoming fall tri-council meeting. Further discussion, seeing none. On the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor. Opposed. Joe, you were, I'm going to vote you in. In favor, okay, nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Counselor Chamsak. Yes, Counselor Chamsak, well, let's, uh. Do we, we. I don't think we need a motion to ask it been to put this on the cow meeting for discussion about priorities. Uh, committee, the, put, putting on, uh, tri-council priorities as a discussion item at the committee in the whole meeting?
Oh, yeah, we can do that, Mr. Chairman. Well, first of all, we'll, um, try to get a date. And then we'll bring something back. Absolutely.
Okay, Counselor Chamsak has made a motion to enter closed session on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor. Opposed, nine and zero, the motion's adopted. Let's take a break, ten minutes, come back at five two. Okay, we have, uh, item. Number twelve point one, Counselor Minns, you had identified that you would like to direct administration to proceed with the engineering. At a cost of twenty-six thousand, one hundred and one dollars as discussed at item thirteen point one. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and zero and the motion is adopted. As it relates to item thirteen point two. Counselor Gerlach, you told me that you. Would like to make a motion. It's county council direct administration to refer to option A. And enter into a property tax payment agreement for tax roll four, three, two, two, three, two, two, three, eight. And is there any discussion on that? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Oh, sorry. Okay, opposed. Sorry, wait a minute. This is all in favor because I didn't actually count. Two, three, four, five, opposed. Six and two, the motion is adopted. I say, should be a hand up. Uh, so that motion is adopted and carried with a count of six and two. Item number thirteen point three. There was no motion coming out of that. That was just an update. And item number thirteen point four, Counselor Minns is going to move. A motion. Did you, uh, is this, did you type this one down earlier, Ms. Blair? Would you be willing to read the motion, uh, thirteen point four?
Please. Moved by Counselor Minns to authorize Athabasca County's portion for the engineering in twenty twenty-four. To be drawn from reserves and to direct administration to make the offer as discussed in item thirteen point four.
And I think just so we're clear, the understanding is Athabasca County's portion is as outlined in the letter. Is there any questions on that motion? On the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and zero and that motion is adopted. And as it relates to item thirteen point five, Counselor Wallach has made a motion to receive the update for information. Is there any discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion, all is in favor. Opposed, the count is, uh, eight and zero and the motion is adopted. There's no further business before us. The meeting is adjourned at thirty-seven minutes past three.